Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Washington, here. Ms. Benjamin?
Here.
Mr. Fishback?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Ms. LaSage? Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you, thank you. First is the approval of minutes from April 26th. Do we have any changes, corrections?
I called in just grammatical and spelling changes.
Nothing else, I'm ready for a motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First item, Ms. Washington?
Certainly. Item number four, Planned Commercial Development Amendment, substantial modification, Daytona Beverage, D E V, 2012-034, quasi judicial hearing.
Can we hear from staff, Mr. Merzick?
Thank you, Dennis Merzick, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. I'll speak up, I know that sometimes the microphone doesn't catch everything, so I'll make sure I speak into the microphone nice and clear today. Again, this is a request to approve a substantial modification to an approved development agreement for the Daytona Beverage Planned Commercial Development. It is a 9.78 acres of land located at 2275 Mason Avenue in Daytona Beach. The modification is to increase the allowable building area from 97,100 square, 180 square feet to 105,000 total square feet. The site location is at, again, 2275 Mason Avenue. The future land use is general industrial and the current zoning is P C D Planned Commercial Development. The Daytona Beverage P C D was originally approved in 2004 as a two-phase development. Recently amended in December of 2001, it expanded the second phase of the building area by a little over 9%. The approval also extended the timetable for development to the end of 2014. The proposed amendment to the Daytona P C D is to increase the total overall building area by 7800 square feet or 8%. This will be an increase to 105,000 total square feet of building area. This is a substantial modification. Anytime there's an increase over 1,000 square feet, we are required to take this as a substantial modification to the planning board for review and approval. I do have a picture of a site plan for you and these are available in your staff reports. I just wanted to show you a couple of locations where you're going to see the modifications. This is a shot of the Phase Two building warehouse that was recently approved with the expansion. And that's the area right over there and that's how it's approved right now. Also with this, there's a, you see an access road to the south of the property or to the bottom of the page there. And that's currently approved. The modification is to expand that building footprint by the additional 8,000 square feet and also to remove that access road. It's been determined that that access road is not needed for the development. A couple of pictures of the current site where the improvements will be occurring. And for a recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the request for the substantial modification to the Daytona Beverage P C D. A majority of vote of the planning board members present in voting is required for approval for the application and a substantial modification of the P D is the final action by the planning board. It will not go on to the city commission. That concludes staff's presentation.
Are there questions of the board or the staff?
I just have one, I just wanted to make sure this will not change the timetable.
The timetable doesn't change at all.
Just wanted to make sure.
And they're anxious to get going and this will be built right away.
Good, good. Hey, we'll hear from the representative of the applicant, Mr. Douse.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Douse. I'm a project engineer with the firm Mark Douse and Associates. Our offices are located at 536 North Halifax. You may recall, I came before you maybe three months ago with an expansion to their project and they decided after further study that they needed a little bit bigger building. So that's why we're back before you. As Dennis mentioned, it is going straight to construction. Matter of fact, we got kind of an early clearing permit based upon the old plans, so they're really already moving dirt. With this approval, they'll move forward with the building. It is to consolidate a purchase of a distributorship which they bought in the land. So this will bring more employees to the City of Daytona. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
Any questions? Other not, there are no other speakers. Board, we're ready for your question.
Motion.
Second.
Motion of the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item number five, preliminary plat, Gateway Business Center, I. D E V 2012-017, quasi judicial hearing.
Staff?
Thank you, again Dennis Merzick, with a planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The next item is a request by Parker Minchenberg and Associates on behalf of Consolidated Tamoka Land Company to approve a preliminary plat for 10.75 acres of land located on Mason Avenue west of Williamson Boulevard. I believe I had east of Williamson Boulevard on the staff report and the project request, so just make that correction, it's west of Williamson Boulevard. The project location is just approximately a mile south of the Mason-Williams interchange. And it says park there, but trust me, it's center. The future land use is general industrial and the current zoning is single-family, R2A. The proposed zoning, which is a concurrent application which will be coming up next, is P C D Planned Commercial Development. With a preliminary plat, the purpose of the subdivision and plating requirements is detailed in Article Four, Section 4.1 of the Land Development Code. It's important, so I'd like to read this for you. It's to ensure that adequate infrastructure is installed and available for development to prevent hazards due to traffic, flooding, unsanitary conditions, or other causes. Permit development in an orderly, physically patterned, and prevent undue burdens of cost or costs to the public. With this particular preliminary plat approval, it is required to go to the city commission for approval. The applicant has not requested any waivers. The final plat approval, which will be following this one at a future meeting, is only required to go to the city commission for approval. Specifics on this preliminary plat includes the plating of Samaritan Road. This is along the northern portion of the site. It's approximately, or it is, 465 lineal feet. It's a 70-foot public right-of-way which includes infrastructure improvements to be built to city standards and it will be dedicated to the city prior to C O. To give you an idea, here's the actual plat. Give you an idea of the Samaritan Road and where that's located. That's, again, along the northern portion of the site. As for a recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat request. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the July 18th city commission and a majority vote of the members present in voting is required for action. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Any questions of the staff or the board? Hearing none, can we hear from the applicant?
Good afternoon, good evening. Parker Minchenberg, 1729 Ridgewood Avenue. I'm the civil engineer on the project. Dennis did a good job, as usual, of explaining what we're up to and I'm here to answer questions if I can.
Questions? Did you see?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess not. We have no other speakers?
Oh, I'm sorry, I almost forgot. No, I almost forgot "public."
There are no other speakers.
Okay. Motion to approve preliminary plat, Gateway Business Center, I. D E V 2012-017, quasi judicial hearing.
We have a motion of the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ms. McKinnon?
Excuse me, item number six, rezoning, Planned Commercial Development, Gateway Business Center, I. D E V 2012-016, quasi judicial hearing.
Staff, I'm sorry.
Dennis Merzick, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The next item is a request by Parker Minchenberg and Associates Incorporated on behalf of Bruce Teeters, Senior Vice President, Consolidated Tamoka Land Company, to rezone 10.75 acres of land located on Mason Avenue west of Williamson Boulevard from R2A to Planned Commercial Development, P C D, to construct 146,080 square feet of office, warehouse, industrial uses, including 20,000 square feet of office with associated parking, truck loading, sidewalks, landscaping, signage, and infrastructure improvements. Again, real quickly, the product, project location is on Mason Avenue, approximately a mile south of the Mason-Williamson interchange. The future land use is, again, general industrial. The current zoning is R2A, single-family residential. And the proposed zoning is P C D Planned Commercial Development. The Gateway Business Center, I, P C D. The site currently is undeveloped. A preliminary plat application is concurrent with this, as you've just seen. The site does have a general industrial land use. The applicant has requested no code waivers, no land development code waivers with this request. T R T has reviewed the site plan. There are some technical engineering details that will need to be resolved prior to a final site plan approval. Those details can be found on Page Three of your staff report. Some of the items include such things as meter sizes, inspection manhole locations, fire hydrant details. And again, prior to any kind of a final site plan approval, these will be rectified. Now, for the proposed development, the development will have 146,080 square feet, which is proposed. The uses include the office, warehouse, and industrial uses such as the assembly and processing, distribution, electrical heating and air conditioning, manufacturing, printing, warehousing, including moving and storage, but excluding any mini warehousing. The full list is also in the staff report, I believe on Page Six. Here's a layout of the site. Mason Avenue is along the bottom, in this case, the bottom of the display. North is over here to the right. I've got another one here, I'll show you. I penciled together, this is actually the landscape plan, but it does show a pretty good indication of where the access points are along Mason Avenue. We have two access points along Mason Avenue. We do have the one access point on Samaritan Boulevard and you do get a good look at Samaritan Boulevard and the improvements that are, excuse me, improvements that are being planned for Samaritan Boulevard. As far as the architectural conceptuals, this is a typical architectural designs that you're going to be seeing for this particular project. The final architecturals will be coming to us with a final site plan approval. The signage that's being proposed is kind of typical of the area out there. You have your Gateway Business Center monument signs, excuse me, your building signage. And as for a recommendation, staff is recommending approval to rezone the 10.75 acres of land on Mason Avenue west of Williamson Boulevard from the R2A, single-family, to the Planned Commercial Development, P C D, and to enter into a P C D agreement establishing development standards for the P D. An affirmative vote of six is required to recommend approval to the city commission. And that concludes staff's presentation.
All right. Any questions by the board of staff? Hearing none, may we hear from the applicant, Mr. Minchenberg?
Thank you again Dennis, Parker Minchenberg, 1729 Ridgewood Avenue. Here to answer questions, if there are any.
No questions? I wouldn't think so.
All right.
We have no speakers signed up. Board, your comments? We have a motion of the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. I might add, number seven and number eight have requested a continuance till next month, to June 28th. We will need to vote on this.
We need to vote to continue.
To continue, yeah, motion to continue.
Motion to continue, rezoning residential plan unit development, D E V 2011-010, quasi judicial hearing. And, can I do them together?
Should be separate.
Separate.
And, oh, should, okay. To the June 28th, 2012 planning board meeting.
Second.
A motion of the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries, would you like to address this? On seven and eight, you're requesting a continuance.
Yes, I'm Jason Jeffries with the Redevelopment Office. Staff and the applicant are requesting a continuance of items seven and eight. An issue has come up regarding the proposed project that we need to resolve in terms of a text amendment that would be, will complement this request and will bring that to you next month.
Fine, this would be for the Renaissance Place and then number eight will be for the Beach Street condos. Item number eight?
Did we vote on the last one?
We have to vote on that one also.
Yeah, we have to vote on number eight.
Okay.
We have a motion of the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number nine, Ms. Washington?
Item number nine, land development code text amendment, permitting hotels in R D D I and R D D II zoning districts. D E V 2012-044.
All right, may we hear from staff, Mr. Jeffries?
Good evening. This is an administrative request from the Redevelopment Division requesting the addition of hotels as a permitted use in the R D D I and R D D II zoning districts. Both these zoning districts are in the core of the downtown redevelopment area, essentially along Beach Street between Live Oak and M M B. Is the, and from Beach Street to essentially mid-block between Palmetto and Ridgewood. And you should have in your packet some maps that describe the location of those zoning districts. As I stated, these are the core of the of the downtown redevelopment area where the main shopping district of Beach Street is in the downtown area. We recently had a request for a, new developers have come in to have purchased what was called the Beach Street Courtyard Project. They are planning to convert what was originally intended to be a residential condo project on the upper floors and a restaurant and other retail uses on the ground floor. They are instead going to do what's called a boutique hotel in the downtown area in this project with the 12 units. Residential converts to the hotel use and they'll still have a restaurant on the ground floor. So we will still continue to have the retail and residential, or retail and restaurant uses on the ground floor, which is what we're looking for in the Beach Street area to keep that pedestrian activity. Also, I think included in my report also mentions, you know, we've had, over the past year, we've had Bob Gibbs with the Gibbs Planning Group has done a market study for the redevelopment, for the downtown redevelopment area and has made several presentations to the Downtown Redevelopment Board and to the C R A. In those presentations and conversation with staff, he's mentioned as he was doing that market retail study, as he was gathering the demand data for the downtown area that there is a demand for hotels in the area, or in the downtown area. And it is common for a downtown area such as ours in Daytona Beach to have business or boutique hotels. So we think this is a justified addition to the use matrix for these two zoning districts to include hotels. And I'll note, in the R D D I zoning district, the hotels would only be allowed in the upper, again, on the upper floors so we could continue to have the focus on retail and restaurants on the first floor. If there's any questions, I can answer them.
Board, do you have any questions of the staff? I thought it was interesting, there were a couple of comments from the downtown Blue Road as far as the concerning height that might be allowed of something if a building were torn down. And another was about the weekly, daily or weekly rates versus a long-term rentals.
Yeah, and essentially hotels, being a hotel would allow for short-term rentals.
Do we have anyone that wants to speak for or against this? In the audience? No speakers, board, your discussion? We have a motion of the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. We're ready for continued items?
Excuse me, continued items. Land development code text amendment, Internet cafes, D E V 2012-023.
Staff?
Thank you Dennis Merzick, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The following is a request by Development and Administrative Services Department, Planning Division, to define Internet sweepstakes and permit the use in the M5 zoning district. Regarding Internet cafes, there's currently a temporary moratorium which was approved by the city commission in December of 2011. And this was a six-month moratorium. The moratorium identifies Internet cafes and similar activities throughout the city. And the moratorium is set to expire in June of 2012. The moratorium prevents the city from accepting new applications as long as the moratorium is in place. Regarding, again, Internet cafes, we have seven different, we've identified seven different locations in the city. Four of these locations have active business licenses. The use is currently identified as games of skill, which is how the zoning is classifying them. We didn't have a definition for Internet cafes at the time, so we went with whatever the closest definition was to that as we were doing our regulations or doing our zoning. And games of skill was the closest one that we could come up with for Internet cafes. Games of skill isn't exactly a perfect match. You'll see games of skill includes things such as video games, target games, pool tables, and pinball machines. Regarding Internet cafes, the state, the state has failed to act at this time to either regulate or define or prohibit Internet cafes. Staff had proposed in March of 2012 to define the use and then to offer a general prohibition of Internet cafes throughout the city. Staff has gone back and taken a look at that proposal and has modified that. Currently, staff recommendation is to define Internet sweepstakes and to permit that use in the M5 zoning district. The definition, the proposed definition of Internet sweepstakes, "A business using any device that upon connection with an object, coin, bill, ticket, card, a token, card, password, or similar means is available to play or operate a game or simulated game which may deliver or entitle the person playing or operating the device to a payoff of any kind." The L D C text amendment would amend Article 13, Industrial Use Schedule, Section Two, and permit Internet sweepstakes in the M5 zoning district. As you remember, the M5 zoning district is located on the westernmost boundary of the city. It's actually along Indian Lake Road. There's a wider array of allowable commercial industrial uses already approved out there. It's comprised largely of undeveloped land and it does lack any permitted residential uses. Based on that information, staff does have a recommendation to approve the modified text amendment request permitting the use of Internet sweepstakes in the M5 zoning district. The text amendment request is tentatively scheduled for the July 3rd, 2012 city commission meeting for first reading and the July 18th city commission reading for second reading. An affirmative vote of six by the planning board shall be required to recommend approval to the city commission. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Board, questions?
No, it's no longer going to be games of skill. It's being pulled out of games of skill and it'll have its own definition now.
I have a question. In going through the packet, when you identified the businesses that have been granted licenses, you have three, that, three businesses that have licenses that are currently delinquent.
Correct.
Are they active?
The last time I checked on it, they were delinquent licenses. The question is whether or not they can come back and to apply for, reapply for this particular type of use. A business license is a little bit different in that it's an administrative item. If the, if the use were to not be active for three or six months based on whether it's redevelopment area or outside of a redevelopment area, then we would look at stopping that use at that point. The business license would not restrict, if they had failed to pay that business license and if they were delinquent, that wouldn't restrict them from coming in to reapplying with that business license as long as they're within that three or six-month period.
How long have they been?
I don't have the exact numbers of how long they've been. I can, I can get that information. I can be able to provide it to the city commission at the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm surprised, I'm surprised something could go that long without having a business license in the city.
The business license term is a bit misleading. We used to call it an occupational license. The Florida statutes were amended to call it a business tax. So it's not a license to operate, it's a payment of a tax. So they're still operating.
Makes a difference, yeah.
And the late payment isn't taking away their rights. They have an opportunity to come in to clear up that payment.
I thought that would clear up a problem real quick.
Well, so did I initially.
And to reapply in states specifically, which they were. That was a.
Well, what I was going to ask, would, doing this, would this work like it did with the adult entertainment? I mean, do they eventually, since they will know, this will not be something that's allowed in that zoning district where they are? And actually, the very fact that it seems they opened under, they have a li, they have a tax, business tax fee, they've paid for something that actually isn't even a permitted use, what happens to them? use, what happens to them? I mean, how do you even renew a business tax for something that wasn't permitted in the first place?
And it's, and it's something we're going to have to take a look at, exactly how it is that they got that license in the first place. You know, whether it's code enforcement that's going to have to get a little bit more involved in that, or we're going to have to take a look at that a little bit further, but we're, as we move this process forward, that's something that we're going to have to take a look at, and, and whether or not they'll, they'll be continued, allowed to continue to operate. It may be a case of, as we get to this point, it might be considered a non-conforming use and be allowed to operate as long as, as the use is, is still in operation.
Three or six month, okay. But no one else can come in new?
No, this would stop all new applications from coming in in any other parts of the city except for the M5 zoning district.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else?
Yeah, I guess I just have a concern, I brought this up when we put the tattoo in the M5, is it just seems like, of course, M5 is where we put in the undesirable uses. I guess I'm wondering about the content, can we get in, can it be problematic that it doesn't seem like there's not much continuity in M5, you know? It's, seems like it's just all over the place.
Yeah, and there is a wide array of uses out there in the M5. You know, one of the things we wanted to take a look at is, is finding a zoning district where this particular type of use perhaps wouldn't be a nuisance to the surrounding areas with the, with, or the surrounding uses. With some of the uses that are out there, the impact would be, would be lessened in the M5 zoning district. And that was something that we wanted to take a look at. The fact that they don't allow residential uses was, was important, to not have that use adjacent to any types of residential uses and, and again, further lowering the impact that, that this particular type of use may have.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no speakers for this. Board?
Motion to approve land development code text amendment, Internet cafes, DEV 2012-023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Item number 11.
Moving right along here this evening. Item number 11, Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Family Dollar, Mason Avenue, DEV 2012-012.
Yes, staff, Mr. Whittenhour.
Thank you, Tom Whittenhour, City of Daytona Beach, Planning Department. This is a request by Jeffrey Lamberson, Twin Rivers Capital, on behalf of First Coast Energy, as well as Karen Gaynor and Betty Cade Norwood, to approve a small-scale comp plan amendment changing the future land use designation from Level 1 Residential to Retail for a 0.29 acre parcel of land located at 800 Derbyshire Road and 815 Essex Road, and amending the comprehensive plan to add a new policy to Neighborhood K of the future land use element to describe the location and acreage of the entire site comprised of three lots to restrict the permissible land uses to retail only. You had a thorough discussion on this item last month, and just a quick reminder, it's comprised of two parts. I use this diagram to explain it. The land use change is again for the two residential parcels that abut the back of the vacant parcel on Mason Avenue from residential Level 1 to retail. And the second part is to put a new policy that wraps around all three as this parcel's consolidated to restrict what otherwise would be a pretty generous list of uses to just specifically a shorter list to accommodate Family Dollar to locate here, and if for some chance it's sold to someone else, it would still be limited to those uses. These are more typical, the diagrams are used to see, and those are the two parcels behind the retail land use designation, and then the two proposed residential lots going to retail. At the last meeting, what seemed to be a big point of discussion was Dwight Durant, the project engineer from Zev Cohen and Associates, explained he attempted to have a neighborhood meeting, which is not a requirement, it's, it was suggested by staff, but due to scheduling problems and who and where he wanted to meet, it wasn't available. So he had asked the board, could you let me, could you still take action, you know, and follow through on having that neighborhood meeting? Instead, the board wanted to go ahead and just table this item and have him conduct that neighborhood meeting as a courtesy and to see what, what the community, the community thoughts were on the item. And he did have that neighborhood meeting, and the summary that he prepared is in your packet. The meeting was held on May 7, and he gave us a two-page summary. If he would like to summarize that in a minute, he could. Reminder, the staff recommends approval of both amendments to the comprehensive plan. I could take any comments if you like. What I didn't put in the slide was the long list of allowed uses in the retail, but it's in your packet. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? We will hear from the applicant. Mr. Lamberson.
Good evening. My name is Dwight Durant, and with Zev Cohen, I'm with Zev Cohen and Associates at 300 Interchange Boulevard, Norman Beach. I'll go into much detail as you wish to summarize the meeting, and I'll leave that up to y'all, but the meeting was held at the Living Faith Church, which is just down the street from the project site. There were about 30 people in attendance. Not all of the, the people in attendance were for this particular item because it's a regularly scheduled, as I understand, meeting that occurs in the neighborhood. But they, Fred Bohm did provide us with the opportunity to present the project. It was presented. There were many questions, all of which I believe were answered there. I provided my information in case there was any follow-up need. I have received no other questions since that meeting. And to my knowledge, there were no objections to the proposed applications as a result of that meeting.
Any questions? I might add that Mr. Fishback was at that meeting, I was at that meeting, and Ms. Askew was at that meeting, asking good questions to that evening, and it is as you have reported here.
I, I have some, they're not questions, but I'm sort of just torn about this, and I just want, because the site plan won't be coming back to us, because this is less than 20,000 square feet, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And when I, the, the small-scale comp plan amendment and the rezoning, when I read the gist of the meeting summary that you supplied, which, which I appreciate, appreciate having, it seems that the gist of the questions have to do with things that will happen on the site plan or not happen on the site plan. And the, the only thing, this, the site plan won't be coming forward as a PD, will it? It will just come forward under the straight zoning, correct? So I don't know how to address some of those concerns and how they get addressed. And I don't even know if it's appropriate since we're not dealing with the site plan and since it's actually under 20,000 square feet, and it's totally in staff's hands to do anyway. But I would just say that I would hope, I drove to the Family Dollar store last night next to the Publix on Ridgewood, I, and I've also been by the one on Nova Road. I hope that the maintenance is better than I have seen at those sites, and I certainly hope that our staff is cognizant of the fact, the one on Ridgewood, the neighborhood are immediately behind it and to the north of it, I could have sat on the front porch and read at nine o'clock last night because of the brightness of the lights. And I, I just hope that that's something, since that was talked about in here and also where garbage pickup is, as this might go forward, that Family Dollar would be a lot more sensitive to here than the sensitivity I have seen explain, at your other properties. So I, we don't, we don't have any say over it, but I did just want to state that for the record, looking at some of these comments here.
I can respond if you wish.
Yes.
Just try to give you a little bit of comfort.
That would help.
In this particular case, actually, we're fortunate that we've done the site plan. And we did the site plan and worked with staff a couple of months before any of this was put together, just to make sure that we could do what we wanted to do. And we went through iterations with the site plan to try to minimize any impact to the adjacent residential. We moved all of the activity up front, we put any buffer activity or any opportunity to provide green space or buffer in the rear, we'll be putting up a wall, and we, we pulled out the site plan for the purposes of the residents to see that. I understand it's not part of this record, but I can tell you that we've gone through that process at the city, and absent of the building plan approval, I believe we're ready to go. So we've made, we've paid our fees, made our application, and then once we go through this process ultimately with City Commission, that'll be the plan. So that's what's, what's proposed. If the store burns down or another economic crisis hits and it's not built and the zoning and the land use sticks with it, we've actually restricted the site.
Right.
It can only be used for retail.
Right. That I'm quite comfortable with.
Yes, that's, that's one heck of a restriction, actually.
Yes, it is.
So we're comfortable with that, and that's why it's there. And then we, we received some permit, some comments while we're at the neighborhood meeting, and we're going to incorporate those. So, and just for the record, that other one is not ours. It's not Twin Rivers, and it's not mine, so I can't speak to that other one, but this site will not look like that.
Okay, but is this one still Family Dollar?
This one is a Family Dollar. A lot, a lot of things have changed with Family Dollar over the course of many years. There's, there's a corporate requirement for, for maintenance and that thing to, that type of thing to occur.
Okay.
If you look at the new ones, they're, they are quite nice.
Okay.
They are, I've seen them.
Thank you.
And those were addressed at that meeting too, both lighting pickup, unloading.
Right, it seems that, but I just.
That was all addressed. And quite truthfully, I think it's a good addition for that neighborhood.
At our last meeting, I requested that you all go back and meet with the neighbors, and I am really appreciative for you doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
I was unable to make the meeting. I'd like to know, because my big question was that property line, where is the brick wall going up? In, in consideration to, let's just say, that neighbor's air conditioning unit.
There is a picture of that home from the street that shows the air conditioning unit. It looks like it's about, I believe I scaled it, it was five or six feet from the property line. And then our wall will be inset into our property in enough distance, I don't know the exact dimension, hang on just a second, please. I do not have it dimensioned, but looking at it, this point in time, it's a 10-foot buffer that we have the wall placed in, and it looks like it's about three or four feet, the face of the wall to the property line. And the reason we do that is because we can't put the face on the, on the property line, because we have a footing underneath it, so we have to, we have to stay on our property. And that'll leave a little bit of green area, so the property line, the adjacent neighbor will actually have an effective wider lot, because there's a fence there now right on the property line.
Right.
So, that's what we've chosen to do.
All right. Thank you very much.
Seems like four feet was what was mentioned in the meeting, if I'm not mistaken. Does that mean you're going to maintain on both sides of the wall too, then?
Uh, yes, we will. I'm just going by the, the picture. I don't know if it's available or not, but there is a nice graphic picture of that.
Take motion to approve small, small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, Family Dollar Missionary Avenue, 2012, that's your report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Discussion, discussion.
I'm sorry.
Discussion.
Oh, okay.
I thought we drew.
No, no.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I thought the silence was the one.
No, no, no.
Go ahead, John.
Sorry. I'm a little perplexed, because I don't think that site plan should be anything in. We're talking about a comprehensive plan amendment and neighborhood policy change. I don't think site plan should enter into this at all. I would move that it be stricken if we were in a courtroom. Just dealing with this one item, the, the small-scale comp plan amendment, to change our residential use to a commercial use. And I think really the issue here is not the site plan, because I'm, I'm sure the, the building will be very good, the business will be very good, and everything will be done to neighborhood standards. But my concern is, it's really a, to me, it's a neighborhood preservation issue. Because what we have here is, we're changing our highest level residential category, the residential comp plan amendment, also the highest zoning, the R1A residential, to one of our highest level, highest intensity level, highest level retail, the BA zoning, directly abutting R1A zoning, our highest level residential. And we've seen this happen in, in other areas where a small piece is taken out of an R1A residential area. We've had this happen in a number of neighborhoods. We've had this happen in Surfside Village. Surfside Village, we've had a whole series of small pieces taken from all around Surfside Village, not only by this type of rezoning, but also by residential PUD zoning and things like that. We've also had it happen in the southern portion of the Seabreeze Historic District, the area south of Seabreeze Boulevard. Small pieces have been taken out adjacent to the commercial uses, eating into the residential uses, decreasing and depleting the residential uses. We also had it happen last year, no, maybe two years ago. We had a series of business automotive extensions along Nova Road near George Ingram, where the business automotive extended into our R1A residential. That's another area where the BA zoning directly abuts the R1A zoning. And the, the buffer walls and all of that that happened, at that, for that one, we did have site plans as part of the submission. But if you go by there now, it's, it's not quite what might have been anticipated. But what we do have over there is we have little parcels, maybe three or four parcels into the R1A residential area that are now, in that case, I think there, there was zoned, it was an RPUD zoning. But we have tentacles into the R1A neighborhood. Now, what that affected, the, the, the R1A housing that was right behind the business automotive use, now we have it three houses in. So it affects the houses across the street, it affects the houses all around, just as one tentacle. And although this is a small incursion, two, two lots, less than one-third of an acre, in principle, it seems to me it is exactly the same thing. We are expanding the higher level use into the residential neighborhood, thereby affecting the, the residential neighborhood. I think we're chipping, we're chipping away piece by piece at the neighborhood, and I think the worst example is Surfside Village. Last month, we saw a, a similar situation with the Daytona Highlands neighborhood, where there was a commercial proposed directly abutting the Daytona Highlands neighborhood. In that case, there was a strong neighborhood organization, but also on, on this board, I believe, we were more concerned with protecting the residential nature than we, than we may see in this, in that case, it was more than, it was more than two acres. In this case, it's a small piece. But my, my, my feeling is, we supported the residents last month in Daytona Highlands for a larger commercial, but it's also a larger neighborhood. But I think we owe the people in Derbyshire exactly the same consideration. And this has nothing to do with what businesses, what businesses are proposed, just as it had nothing to do with what businesses were proposed around the other neighborhoods that have been affected by this type of activity. So I don't, I just find it very difficult to impinge on a neighborhood. I know it's a small area, but we're chipping away. And now, in And now, instead of having the gentleman, last month, the gentleman who lived in the director-abutting house, said he was concerned what would happen to him. He was the gentleman, I guess, who talked about the air conditioner. But more than that, now he's going to have the back of a commercial building directly next to his property. Now, before that, he had the buffer of another house. Maybe the other house had the back of the gas station when it was there. But that is just the way that our residential directly abuts our commercial. And it seems to me, we should be protecting our residential neighborhoods. Because if we're not preserving our neighborhoods, it doesn't matter what businesses are along our major thoroughfares. If people are not living there, and people don't want to live there, there's no sense in us doing anything, actually. So I just can't support even one little incursion, because it starts with one little incursion. In two months, we're going to have a little incursion two blocks down. But we're going to have an incursion two more houses on the same block. And yet, when you drive down those blocks, I mean, they're very nice neighborhoods, like any other neighborhood. Some good houses, some bad houses, but people taking care of their houses. And I'm just for the residents on this, and I think our activity in this goes against the interest of the neighborhoods, and I'm just opposed to going against the interest of the neighborhoods. And it doesn't matter whether it's a small piece, or it's a large piece. So I guess I'm speaking in favor of the residents.
Can I ask a question, quick? Did you go to that meeting last month?
No.
Because I'm curious, when you say "I'm speaking on behalf of residents..."
No, I said, my opinion.
So you're speculation?
If I were a resident, as I say, this has nothing to do with the quality of the businesses that go anywhere.
I understand exactly what you're saying, and my only thing is, you can only speak in speculation, because if I'd asked you, "Did you go to that meeting last month?", and you said, "Yes, and when I was at that meeting last month, these were some of the concerns that were presented in front of me that I was very concerned about," then I think that would be a valid argument. I missed that meeting last month, because I moved, changed addresses, so the notice for the meeting was sent to my old address, but I didn't have filed with the city my new address, so it was forwarded to me. I got the letter that day of the meeting, but I got home that evening, and the meeting was already in session. I missed the meeting.
I'm sorry.
But, that's fine, that's fine. But I did drive down that road, and I stopped in at a couple of places down there. I stopped in at Hampton's Restaurant, had a little lunch there, went down. By the way, if you guys get a chance to go to that place, that's some good food over there. I'm not kidding.
We know it.
My first time to go there, and I will go back. And then, I stopped in at, there's a corner store that's on the other side of Essex. And I just took half a day there, and I walked around, started talking to people. And some of the people that I spoke with, they knew about the meeting that had taken place, and they knew about the plans for that lot. And some of the things that I heard from the people that lived there, thought it was a great idea, because it would allow them to have a shop, a store, there in their community, where they didn't have to get in their car and drive... And it's funny, because so many people in Hamptons even told me, there are people that live in this community that don't have the luxury of just getting in a car anytime they want to, to go get necessities. So when they heard about that, they thought, "This is a great idea, because I can get some of the things I need," whether it be last minute, or what have you, "because I could just walk to this place." So I mean, I understand what you're saying. You say, I think speculatively, you speak for the community, or that area. And the only reason I question that, because you weren't at that meeting, I wasn't there, but I did go through that community, and the people that I spoke with thought that the shop there on a lot that's vacant. And in their eyes, all this will do is improve the area. All this will do is make it, number one, make the area look better. Number two, is keep the traffic, and people told me this in Hamptons, keep the traffic of the people that are cutting through that lot back and forth, doing whatever they're doing, and I'm not going to accuse anybody, because I don't have the facts, but the people who live there say, keep the people coming off that lot, going and doing whatever they're doing, this building's going to make the place look better. I think it's going to be improvement to the area that I live in, and the fact that I don't have to get in my car and go to a place when I can go here. And people that I know don't have a car, they can't go there, they can't go other places, they can go to this shop to get what they need. So I'm not trying to drag this on, but I'm not trying to take it, you know...
No, no, I am dragging it on.
But I just think, and everything that I looked at and asked about, and people there, and I will say, I missed that meeting, but I did put forth an effort to try to find out what they wanted. And all I got was just a positive response to that.
I just might add that the resident you're talking about was at that meeting also, and he seemed satisfied, from what I saw.
Yeah, I need to respond, please.
Certainly.
Because what I am talking about, I am talking about neighborhood preservation. As I preface this, this has nothing to do with whatever business goes on the property.
I understand that.
And in terms of, when I said "speaking for the neighborhood," I just meant speaking for the, in terms of neighborhood preservation. And this strikes me, not dealing with site plans, not dealing with businesses, this strikes me as an incursion into the neighborhood, and the first bite.
And I understand that, and I understand what you're saying, I really do. And I think there's sometimes, we have to make decisions to really preserve a neighborhood, and sometimes we do have to maybe take a little, just a piece of here out, but if it benefits the neighborhood as a whole, I mean, I don't understand where you're coming from, but I think this project in itself does preserve the neighborhood. I think what they're putting there, it's perfect for the neighborhood.
If we look at the other neighborhoods, that may not always be the case, but we agree to disagree on that, so...
I do have a question. I meant to ask this at the meeting. You purchased two lots, is it two, I think?
Yes.
Two, where they both, did they both have homes on them?
Yes, they did.
Were they both occupied when you bought them?
No, they were not. I was looking at Joe Boyd, he's here from Twin Rivers Capital.
Okay, could I have that answer? Whoever can answer that? Were they both occupied, I mean, you said they weren't both occupied?
I don't believe they were.
You need to come to the microphone.
Yeah. Say your name.
Eight, Pat Heard, eight twenty-two Vernon Street. I have lived in the Derbyshire area before, and the house on Derbyshire, behind the old service station, is vacant. Matter of fact, both houses there. And on Essex Street, it is, I'm not sure on Essex, but the one on Derbyshire, two on Derbyshire. And I think with the business coming there, it would be a help, because it is deteriorating out there, with trash, windows broken, everything. So, no, the house is not vacant.
Is vacant. Has that been vacant?
One she know of.
One for sure.
Both of them.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Joe Boyd. I'm with Twin Rivers Capital, we're the developers for the project. We're based out of Charleston, South Carolina. But just wanted to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, was somebody living in the home? Was it vacant? How long had it been vacant? Was it in foreclosure? I mean, if it was vacant for so long, you would think it would be bank-owned by now, or...
Yeah, I don't know that answer personally. I personally wasn't involved in that, but I'm pretty sure that they were vacant at the time that we purchased them.
Those are one of the three applicants for this.
But he may not have been involved in the purchase.
Yeah, I wasn't personally involved in it.
Yeah, and the purchase, he's a property, yeah.
Right, we're the developers. I believe that they were vacant.
Yeah. And I will, I'm not sure, I know one's been vacant a long time, because we eat at Hampton's a lot, and the one right across, it's wonderful. The one right across the street from it, that's been vacant quite some time, broken windows, I mean, it's that one. I don't know about the one behind it on Essex, but the one facing Derbyshire has been a vacant property for a long time.
Okay, I guess the reason why I ask, because I wouldn't be, I mean, I wouldn't be interested in somebody being pushed out of a home, in order for...
Of course not, in any other way.
You know, because that happens not necessarily here, but it happens all over the country where people get, you know, "Hey, here's $20,000, get out." You know, and the house is worth 50, I mean, you know the story.
No, that was not the case here.
So I wouldn't, I'm not a advocate of that, and neither would I support something like that.
But only a municipality can do eminent domain. A private person can't. A private, eminent domain, that makes someone...
Absolutely, yeah.
A municipality or a government entity is the only one that has that power.
Absolutely, I didn't, I wasn't, didn't mean to imply that it would be eminent domain, but certainly, investors come in all the time, and say, "Hey, you know, let us take it off your hands for 15,000. Look, you can't make the improvements, how about you just go? We'll take it off your hands and fix it up," or whatever. Or if they're behind, or anything like that.
Could I, I just have, listening to the conversation next door, I did, I went back and forth about this, because of going into the R1 zoning. But when I look at what the front zoning is, without a buffer, and I, and again, I couldn't make that meeting, I had a conflict that night, but I had gone out before even to find out if there had been one, and then went out afterwards. But I, without a buffer, what BA would allow, and without this text amendment, with the restrictions that you are willing to put on BA zoning, that actually, to me, strengthens this area, and does protect the neighborhood in the back, especially in terms of working with, you know, putting your stormwater back there, putting the, of course, you're meeting the compatibility standards of Article 18, with how deep your buffer is, with the wall, which is not going to be just concrete block, it has to match the design. I mean, to me, this is actually, with what could be on here as BA, this is a huge improvement. And when I look at the zoning that's immediately, if you continue west on Mason, the BR2, what could be done on BR2 is even more than what you are restricting yourself to doing on BA. And so normally, I would agree with John on this, in terms of neighborhood encroachment and neighborhood preservation, but I think this is very forward-thinking to a small lot, and developing it in a way that's going to work for the neighborhood, with actually a lot of what Mr. Bohan said, as well. And having, yes, the site plan had no business here, but I did have concerns, and it was the only time to address it, because it's not before us. But looking at the issues involved, I think that you are far and away meeting the concerns that would come up with these kinds of amendments and rezonings. And so I appreciate that.
I certainly understand where Mr. McGinnis is coming from, and the two areas that he points out, he's exactly right about. In this particular case, though, I don't look at it as degradating that area, it's a plus. And that particular business does become a part of the neighborhood, it's part of their success. So I very definitely...
Just to offer a little bit of response to, hope you make you feel better about your decisions, a little bit, Mr. McGinnis there. Twin Rivers is actually a second entity looking at the project. There was one prior to, maybe over a year ago, where all of the transactions occurred, and I believe they came in after that fact, so the homes were vacant when they became involved, and they're actually looking, the owners would like the transaction to occur. Obviously, they're part of the application, so, I'm sorry, Mr. Fishback, that was your question. The other part is, when we look at the rezoning and the land use, they're project-specific, so we're not setting any precedence for anything to occur anyplace else. We look, the analysis right here, and actually, if you look at the line of the retail right now, it dips, or the residential dips down towards Mason Avenue, and we're kind of squaring that off. And it's zoned for the retail right now, the BA, but it's only 124 feet deep, and that's why it's vacant. You just, you physically can't fit anything in there, and this affords that opportunity. So trying to not impact the neighborhood, but make it just enough to where actually something can go there.
If there's no more discussion, I'm ready for a motion.
We have the motion.
Yep, we have a motion and a second.
We have public.
Public.
John.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I've only been here about 30 years, but when I got here, Mason was not that wide. The same thing happened with A1A, when they widened A1A. There are now about six properties on A1A that are very difficult to renovate. There's one great lady, for 20 years, she's never been able to rent her property, the business, on A1A, but they took so much frontage, she has no parking. So she has to pay the taxes, she has to do what she has to do, but nobody wants the property. Right next to the Pizza Hut, there's a little tiny piece of property, nobody can do anything with it. What happens when you widen roads, the properties that are on that road, they were fine when we had tiny little buildings, we no longer have little tiny buildings. They have to be large enough to sustain themselves. And that corner property, because of the widening of the road, is just too tiny. When it was a gas station, you could squeeze in and out. Now, when you put a new building in there, you're going to have problems, you will always have problems. With that house on the corner, all right, one of the reasons is, if you've ever been at that intersection, the traffic backs up. You cannot get in, you cannot get out. So if you rent a house, and you can sit there for 20 minutes before you can get in or out, if nobody lets you out, it's a problem. If you look at the shopping center across the street, their driveway goes right into that house. So it's problematic, because they want to get onto Derbyshire, so if anything opens up, they're pulling in. It's making it very difficult for anybody to rent, or to buy that house, because nobody really wants it. So then, you end up with the one house on Essex. There's a gentleman across the street that made a comment, "Well, what about the driveway in my house? Am I going to have that problem?" And no, the building's going to be in front of him, so he's happy. Talked to the gentleman with the air conditioner. He wants the thing, but he was worried about his air conditioner. It's not that he opposed it, he just worried about his air conditioner. So there's nobody opposing this, except this board. The neighborhood wants it, from what I understand, and I didn't go to the meeting, but from what I read, most of the residents had small questions, but did not oppose it. This will be problematic in the future, when there are other properties on major streets that will need a little extra room, because we've widened streets, or buildings need to be bigger. If we lock it in now, we're going to be problematic on all of Mason Avenue, and it really needs a facelift. Thank you.
Can I have a motion on the floor? Yes.
Second?
We have a motion and a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
Okay, that was 11.
Item number 12.
Item number 12, rezoning, Family Dollar, Mason Avenue, DEV 2012-013, quasi-judicial hearing.
Thank you, Dennis Merzick Planer, with the City of Daytona Beach. This is the companion application that was going with the land use change that had just gone through. This is a request to approve an application to rezone .29 acres of land located at 800 Derbyshire Road and 815 Essex Drive, from single-family residential, R1A, to business automotive, BA, allowing for the potential development of an 8,050-square-foot retail building with associated parking, utilities, and stormwater improvements. Again, and I know you've seen this before, but the site location is, for just the rezoning, is 800 Derbyshire Road and 815 Essex Drive. The current land use is Level 1 residential. The proposed land use will be retail, and that is with the neighborhood policies in place. The current zoning is R1A, single-family residential, and the proposed zoning is the BA, business automotive. A couple of pictures of the current buildings that are on 815 Essex and 800 Derbyshire, recent photos. And as far as the rezoning to the BA business automotive, BA business automotive, it does allow for a lot of different types of uses. Some of those uses include retail sales and service, restaurants, business professional, and personal services. It also includes adult bookstores and theaters, and several auto uses. When we take in the associated comp plan amendment with this... comp plan amendment with this, with this rezoning, it will limit the site to, uh, retail development only, uh, providing retail convenience goods, uh, and it will not permit any type of residential uses. Uh, the, just one quick note, um, as far as a lighting plan, I know you mentioned that before, but there will be a lighting plan submitted with this application for a site plan, and we will make sure that, uh, in the review process, that the lighting plan is compliant with the city's, uh, LDC requirements. As for a recommendation, staff does recommend approval to rezone the .29 acres of land located at 800 Derbyshire Road and 815 Essex Drive from single-family residential to business automotive contingent upon approval of the associated small-scale comp plan amendment. An affirmative vote of six by the planning board shall be required to recommend approval, uh, to the city commission. And that does conclude staff's presentation.
Any questions from the board of staff? No speakers on this. Discussion?
May we have a motion to approve rezoning, Family Dollar, Mason Avenue, Level 2012, DEV 2013, quasi judicial hearing.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Item number 13.
Item number 13, land development code text amendment prohibiting uses in the midtown redevelopment area, DEV 2012-018.
May we, uh, hear from staff, Mr. Bryant?
Good afternoon, board. Charles Bryant, redevelopment, project manager, Midtown Redevelopment Area, City of Daytona Beach. I would just like to ask the board, be a little patient with me tonight. I just had a, uh, quarters-on-shot procedures this morning, so I'm still in a little pain. Uh, but I'm last, so I ask you bear with me this afternoon. This is, um, a request by the, with my presentation ready. She's looking for it, but, uh, this is a request by the Development and Administrative Service Department, Redevelopment Division to amend the Land Development Code, ALDC, Article 12, Redevelopment Areas and Districts to prohibit car washes, vehicular service, light and heavy, sales and rental of vehicles, light, heavy, and recreational, and auto supply stores in the midtown redevelopment area. I would just like to mention to the, the planning board that do have some midtown, uh, redevelopment board members for the night, and I would like to, before I start my presentation, recognize them by asking them to stand because I am presenting this on their behalf. So, if you would, please stand. Okay, thank you. After numerous community workshops over a period of 18 months, the Midtown Master Plan was completed and accepted 7-0 at the February 15, 2012 Community Redevelopment Agency Board, CRA, to begin the approval process. The Master Plan establishes a vi- a vision and development guidelines for the entire Midtown area. Although the plan does not specifically refer to prohibit, uh, prohibition of certain uses, it does suggest that redevelopment of areas such as along the ISB corridor, redevelops as higher density mixed-use development versus the current presence of auto-related uses. This document is also available on the city website. The city comprehensive plan discouraged auto-related uses on West ISB International Speedway Boulevard and Midtown as follows. And I would like to also acknowledge to the board that, uh, as it states in the future land use element, the Main Street, Downtown, Midtown, South Atlantic, and Blue Road redevelopment areas contains a mixture of urban land uses particular to those redevelopment areas. Uh, mixed use means that, and, or area generally suitable for, uh, variety of land uses included land, industrial, office, tourism, uh, accommodations, retail, multifamily residential, assisted living facilities, hospitals, public schools, and planned amusements. Residential uses shall be located in such a manner that will provide a compatibility with the non-residential uses. I do have a copy of these, uh, particular, uh, uses as they, uh, uh, apply to the, uh, future land use element. Uh, these are neighborhoods H, G, I, and L that apply to these particular compatibility on the comprehensive plan. I have attached for, uh, your viewing, a map. On that map, it only shows the, uh, neighborhood H, and, uh, the reason I brought this information forward to you is to fight that, to let you know that Midtown only comprises a small part of the H, of the neighborhood H. There are other, uh, neighborhoods that will, uh, that, that applies for the rest of the Midtown area, and that is the, uh, the G, I, and L neighborhoods. Midtown redevelopment area prohibited uses, uh, right now, uh, is convenience stores, check-cashing stores, outdoor storage, packaged alcohol, berry stores, pawn shops, used clothing sale, used furniture sales. The proposed text amendment change, uh, will, uh, these are the changes that we are looking to, uh, to prohibit car wash, vehicular service, light and heavy, uh, sales and service of vehicles, heavy, light, and recreational, and auto, uh, supply stores. We were, uh, continuing from last month's mid, uh, uh, planning board meeting because at the last Midtown meeting, they added the, uh, auto supply stores as a, uh, recommendation for a commi-, uh, to be a prohibited use. So, uh, we asked for more time to bring, uh, to bring this forward to the planning board. Last month, we asked that we get a contingency and bring it forth this month. The project analysis, the land development code may be amended subject to certain criteria outlined in Article 4, Section 2.3. Um, the, there are questions, the following questions serve as guidelines and, uh, determine a recommendation. Has there been a change in conditions since the current zoning designation regulations were adopted? Have major land uses or conditions changed since the adoption? The answer to that question is yes. Conditions has changed as car washes and auto-related businesses that first proliferated and over time have now deteriorated, are vacant, and in general contribute to visible light and a trite nuisance. A list of those uses and their locations together, uh, is in a map that I will display to you shortly after I, uh, continue the questions. Uh, B, is the amendment compatible existing development patterns? Yes, mo- most automobile uses are located to Nova Road and Mason Avenue. Will the amendment adversely affect patterns of congestion? No. Redevelopment of lots with fewer access drives directly on major streets will reduce traffic, uh, conflicts. D, will the amendment adversely impact population density or development intensities such that the demand for utilities, transportation facilities, recreation areas and facilities, schools, and other public facilities and service is adversely affected? To the contrary, the prohibition of auto-related uses will reduce the number of car lots that could be redeveloped for more intense use or land use intended by the Midtown Master Plan. What effect will the amendment have on the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood of the city? Redevelopment of the sites occupied by auto-related uses that are currently in eyesore, especially along the primary entry to the city ISB, will improve the welfare, welfare of the neighborhood and the city. Exhibit A, uh, has relevant development board meetings, which you have in your packet. Exhibit B is, uh, the March 13 Midtown Staff Report, uh, by the Midtown Redevelopment Board members. Exhibit C is a list of auto-related, uh, uses and a map, which I will bring up shortly. Car wash, uh, the City of Daytona Beach currently has eight active business license for establishments operating car washes as, uh, accessory uses within the Midtown redevelopment area, and they are 840 Dr. Martin Luther King, uh, Bethune, excuse me, 840 Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard, that is, uh, Bush Car Wash, this was an old service station, now converted into a car wash, 506 Orange Avenue. Uh, Earl Car Wash is, uh, a car wash just across the railroad track down Orange, uh, Avenue, 918 Orange Avenue, that's Derek Car Masters. This is a, actually a barber shop where they're washing cars. Uh, 127 South Nova Road, Crystal Car Wash, this was a car wash that came before. The Midtown Redevelopment Board, uh, had been vacant for more than 90 days. Uh, it was approved to be reopened. In addition to the four active business licenses listed above, there are three other locations with business licenses which are currently delinquent and one that has been closed over 90 days. These are 540 Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard, Pyramid Car Wash, closed over 90 days, 248 South Martin Luther King Boulevard, Mr. Jay's Car Wash, this was another old car wash, uh, old service station converted into a car wash, 20 South, 201 South Martin Luther King Boulevard, Earl's Shell, this was another old service station converted into a car wash, 826 Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard, The Wash, another old service station converted into a car wash, sales and service rental of vehicles. Most of the uses are located along the International Speedway Boulevard. This is an inefficient use of the land. Six of these businesses have been closed for over 90 days. Below is a list of those businesses. The toy store, 556 West ISB, closed over 90 days. Used car lot, 885 West ISB, closed for over 90 days. Daytona Lincoln Mercury, Mercury, 966 West ISB, closed over 90 days. AA Action, 887 West ISB, closed over 90 days. DMT, 737 West ISB, closed over 90 days. Budget, the old, uh, I think it was Budget or Rent a Car Place there, 558 West ISB, closed over 90 days. Auto Supply Stores, Napa Auto Parts, 945 West ISB, is active. Auto Paint and Supply, 955 West ISB, closed over 90 days. Auto Zone, 245 North Nova Road, active. Surfus Unlimited, 613 West ISB, active. Uh, listing of the, uh, existing businesses that will become non-conforming, uh, a list of those are in the package. Also in the package, they have, uh, um, we, we have a list of those who, uh, have active licenses, the one that are delinquent. Uh, you have both lists in your packets. Uh, one that needs to be added to that is the Daytona Toyota located at 541 North Nova Road. That one will also become a non-conforming use, uh, and should have been put on the list. Exhibit D, this is a map of the Midtown CRA existing automobile uses, uh, which also, if you look at the corner on, uh, George Ingram, uh, that part of the Toyota, uh, uh, actually is in Midtown, and it should have been on the prohibited use list.
I'm sorry, what was that one again?
That was the, uh, the one that you-
Oh, the Toyota. I thought you just said one right after that. I heard another one.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Just that one.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I have pict-, uh, pictures here of the, the properties that I just spoke of. Uh, these are, are properties, the car washes in the Midtown Redevelopment Area. These are the vacant properties that I talked about that are on ISB. My recommend, recommendation to the planning board, the Midtown Redevelopment Project Manager and the Midtown Redevelopment Area Board recommend that the planning board approve to the, to the following uses be added to prohibited use specifically to the Midtown Redevelopment Area. Car wash, vehicular service, light and heavy, sales and rental of vehicles, heavy, light, and recreational, auto supply stores. The text amendment request is temporarily scheduled for the July 30, 2012, first reading, and July 18, 2012, second reading, public hearing, city commission meetings. An affirmative vote of six by the planning board shall be required to recommend approval to the city commission. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Board, any questions? Staff? Tracy?
Um, I, just a, a couple. I did drive, coming here tonight, drive down ISB, and I also think one that's left out, looking at the, um, it would be, I think vehicular service would be Stan's Transmissions. Because both sides of ISB, right, or, so Stan's Transmissions. And I, I wasn't sure, Buddy's on ISB? Is that an, is that an auto parts?
Rent.
It's rental? Because I don't see Buddy's.
No, it's rent, it's rent-to-own, like, place.
But it's, it's auto or is it rent?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
No, I rent furniture.
It's furniture. Okay, I went by so fast and there was so much traffic, I could, okay, it's like Aaron's or Daytona or, or Gator Rents. Yes. Okay. Um, and just, um, one, one thing since, um, on page two in the staff report, um, you talked about, of course, most of, the Midtown redevelopment, uh, area is in neighborhood H, and then you talked about the other neighborhoods that are on here, but the future land use element, neighborhood H, um, I just wanted to make, this is actually neighborhood M, the one that's used here. Uh, the issue and the policy, not the redevelopment element, but the future land use element that's listed as neighborhood H, that's actually an issue and policy from neighborhood M. So, that actually would not apply, correct? Because neighborhood M, you said H, G, I, and L. I just wanted to make sure.
Right, yes.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure of that. And then just the, the one other thing, and I know, um, minutes are, they're not verbatim, um, but I just did want to make sure the Midtown, the March, uh, meeting of the Midtown Redevelopment Board, um, the, when you had mentioned that the Midtown plan had been completed and approved by the city commission and the CRA, in your staff report, I think you pointed out correctly where you said the plan has been, um, what'd you say it, accepted?
Yeah.
By, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because approved and accepted are very different.
It's been accepted to go far to-
You meant, okay, through the process. I just want, okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions? We have, uh, four speakers. All right, Mr. Morris.
Chairman, if you'd permit me, I know there must be speakers that are four. I'm against. Would you allow the speakers to be four to come first?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Matthews. Mr. Matthews.
He's against.
Mr. Gardner is against. They're all against, so.
So, you got them?
Yeah, they're all against.
Oh.
I'm sorry, here's a four. Mr. Ivy Jr.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Him is Ivy 314 South Franklin Street, Midtown Redevelopment Chairman. To this Board, first, although Charles already did, I'd like to first always recognize my Board and the support that they are giving us on how they're, so I ask them to stand again, because I asked them to come out on a night when they really don't have to be out, but because this is so vital to the transformation of the Midtown area, I felt the need that we all need to come out so you can see that we support the legislation that we're trying to push. Mr. Bryant already stated that 18 months of preparation went into developing a master plan. Out of the 18 months since then, we've already started the implementation of the master plan. I've currently attended a lot of meetings with staff on how we need to go about moving forward, the master plan, so it can become law in our area. One of the things that I sit back and really look at is, while we were developing this master plan, the participation that came from the community, both residential and business owners. It's a difference if you come out and support or put into play what your position is or your future use is when a plan is being developed for an area. Not too many business owners really came out throughout the whole process while we was doing this planning. So you have over two years to come out and say, hey, I plan on doing this, I plan on doing that, or these are our future plans for our location, if you're a business owner or a resident in the Midtown Redevelopment area. On the prohibited use list, as we did, as we start to develop it, one reason that we started looking at, how do we make this transition into the master plan and into the future is, well, we got to start looking at what's working, what's not working, and what we can bring into our area. A lot of things that were stressed during a lot of the different meetings were, let's take a look and identify the five most important areas of Midtown. And those five most important areas are your corridors. And the belief is, if you can build up your corridors and make them a beautiful gateway, eventually the infill will come. The prohibited uses that we're trying to push through now will help us do that. I say that to say, if you go, we had a big issue dealing with car washes in the Midtown area. Same as convenience stores. The same as nonprofit organizations. Those are the type issues that we deal with in Midtown. So in order to start making a change and transition, we have to start limiting certain uses in our community. Now what this will do is in turn bring in the opportunity for bigger development. We currently have a RFP out now for the police station site. That was one area on the corner of Orange Avenue that was identified in the study. The other study was the main corridor dealing with ISB. Another corridor is our Orange Avenue corridors in Martin Luther King and the Mary McLeod Bethune areas and the Shady Place area. So that's five different areas that we are really focusing on, cleaning up, assembling land, and making sure that we can spur development in these different areas. When I sit back and look at different sites that we talked about, ISB is important to our corridor. When you come into Daytona Beach, the first thing you see is Mid, I mean, is the Speedway. The next thing you come to is Krispy Kreme Donuts, which is our, which is the start of Midtown. If we can start rebranding that corridor, like we're trying to rebrand the other corridors, it will make a difference in our community. When we sit back and look at what's going on, what's planned in the future, well, we've already known that Department of Transportation has already came in and will start putting their new arms, light arms, on the corner of ISB and Nova Road, which will start making a significant improvement to the land streetscape. Immediately after that is done, it's already been approved and coming through, the phase two and three of the ISB corridor will start being re-streetscape, just as is between Martin Luther King and Lincoln Street. So now, all the lighting and lights and streetscape will be looking beautiful, and we're also looking at trying to put a logo, just like we have the Midtown logo, right at the beginning of ISB and Nova Road. So when we sit back, we're trying to clean up our community, and that's why it's very important that we sit back and look at what we're doing and why we are doing it, and that the Board understands, the Planning Board understands why we are doing this. I would like to say that when we sit back, I sit back and listen to different areas that's going on, the growth, and how you're making the changes, and how you're preparing the downtown areas for hotels and motels and different things, condos. On the B side, you have the E-zone going in. On A1A, you have potential other hotels coming in, especially dealing with the Shriner's Convention that's coming into town. If Midtown has the opportunity to prohibit these uses, we will in turn be able to attract different developers also to help develop and become a part of Daytona Beach, which in turn will help us on our tax base, which in turn will give us economic impact into our communities. Real economic impact. That is why we are sitting back trying to limit it, limit some prohibited uses in our area. We do not want to look like, if you go to other major cities, urban areas, we do want, we do not want to continue to look like Little Beirut or Little Saigon or little places where everything is stacked on top of each other. That is why, when Mr. Bryant showed his slide, he showed you all the different shops, the car washes, the empty car lots and different things like that, that's already in our area on our main corridors. This is another reason why we are saying enough is enough. If we're going to transition and become a part of Daytona, we need these uses put into our prohibited use list, which will in turn help our master plan while we go through the implementation procedures of it. I also would like to take the time to thank Mr. Bryant, before I sit down, for all the hard work he has done on making sure that we provide enough data to the Planning Board and to the City Commission and to the Midtown Redevelopment Area Board, so we can make intelligent decisions in order to move the community forward. So I'm asking, when you make this vote tonight, we ask that you approve this prohibited use list in order to make Midtown Daytona a part of Daytona economically and beautify it also. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Chairman and to the Board. Thank you.
We have no more speakers, for, speakers against. Mr. Irving Matthews.
Chairman, I'll go first, but I think there may be other speakers that wish to turn their forms in. I saw forms being picked up, and I don't want to jump back and forth. This is my only question to you.
Sir. I, we have so many speakers, I think we may need to set a time limit on this. I'm willing to give you a little extra time, like we did with Mr. Ivy, but then I think-
I don't mind. I just want to be succinct when I get up so that I can answer the issues that are brought to you and the support.
Well, before you start, I have two more that's four, so.
Okay. So I will be glad to sit back there.
Two-minute time limit on this, if we could. Is that all right?
Chairman, if you would, in all fairness to speakers, three minutes, two minutes is very tough to get much said more than your name.
Well, I'm just following-
I don't want to be here long time.
I'm just following City Commission, and that's what they're doing, so.
Well, actually, I disagree with the City Commission, but I, I, I think, I actually would agree with Mr. Morris on that. I think three minutes-
Three minutes.
Three minutes is a fair.
Mr. Thule, please.
Martin Thule, 640 Marion Street, Daytona Beach, Florida. Member of the Midtown Redevelopment Board. To the Planning Board and to all those assembled here, one of the things that we mentioned earlier is the preservation of neighborhoods and trying to be aesthetically perceptive and to make things look better. One of the biggest developers in the United States, Mr. Donald Trump, said that the things that he does is he tries to make the entrance ways and the general corridors of whatever he takes over to be so aesthetically pleasing until it takes your breath. Can we say the same thing about the areas that come into Daytona Beach? Indeed, we can't. We need to realize that, yes, we do want businesses to be developed, but the thing that we don't want is to have businesses that are in, that have been an eyesore and continue to be an eyesore. One of the major things that has happened in Daytona Beach is we know that Daytona Lincoln Mercury has been closed for years. We've got people looking at it now, but one of the things that I'm concerned about is, why did it take so long for anyone to want to do something until something like this came forward? That tells me that this is something that's needed in our community. Having grown up in Daytona Beach, lived here for over 50 years, I can tell you that the way that Daytona looks now is not the way it used to look. The only way to make a difference is to stand up and change things that need to be changed. Yes, it's going to ruffle feathers, it's going to make people upset, but it needs to be done. A facelift is needed throughout the entire city of Daytona Beach, and the various businesses that come in can be more neighborhood friendly. We are trying to do things in harmony with the Midtown Master Plan, which is also in harmony with the Land Use Code. We need to make a stand. This Board needs to help us to make that stand, to make a difference in this community. Thank you. You all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Denise McMillan.
Denise McMillan, Cato.
Sorry.
I just recently got married. 929 Loomis Avenue, they say I'm the fire within the burning. First of all, I want to respect the Board with whatever you decide that goes on in your meeting, and I appreciate the fact that you don't let people determine how you run your meetings and what should and should not be allowed. I've been a resident all of my life of Daytona Beach in Midtown, attended college, moved away, came back, and Daytona looked the same. The only changes was stucco and paint. No infrastructure, no anything. Being on the Midtown Board, it really hardens me to know that for three years we've been meeting to achieve a master plan, which has been accepted. And the four gentlemen that I assume that are clustered behind me that are against it, I've only seen one face. Whatever their plan is, I hope it's one that you all respect and consider, but consider this, they're going to make their money and move back to the illustrious gated suburbs and wherever they may live. Their impact that we're trying to bring to Daytona Beach, that as a young person, that when you graduate from Embry-Riddle Aeronautical, Daytona State, Bethune-Cookman, or go through Bethune-Cookman's graduate study program, that we can keep you here where there's some economic development, and that economic development would allow you to buy a home to where there's a tax base, to where you could raise a family. I don't care where you go in the city of Daytona Beach, when you hit Adams Street until you get to Ridgewood Avenue, outside of what Bethune-Cookman University has done, it's sad and it's a joke. And it's time for people to stop coming in here and assuming because they're the big wigs with the dollar sign, that they can tell us what we need to do and stomp our plans out. The Board that I've been on has come a long way. We're strong. We're going to band together to get what we want in Midtown. Everyone has that First Amendment to speak. But it hardens me that Race Week, Bike Week, any big event we have in town, the traffic that travels from 95, from the Speedway and rushes through International, through Midtown, doesn't get the feel of being a visitor, a vacationer to a big event in Midtown. They pick it back up once they cross Ridgewood Avenue. All I'm saying is, the things that have been here that have not complied, which we have data from the Police Department, if these gentlemen would like to see the reports as to the numerous calls and problems that we have had with these items that we don't want in our area, that can be supported. I really wish that they would invest, and invest, and investigate to see what really goes on. My time is short. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. The next ones are against. Mr. Morris.
Chairman, I've got more, and Board members, I've got more coming from the other side. My name is Jim Morris. I'm here on behalf of Irving Matthews. He's the owner of Daytona Lincoln Mercury, and his property will be directly affected by this request. I would ask you respectively to turn in your staff report to the list of properties that will become nonconforming. Look at those pages. There are four pages of property owners that are Volusia County Daytona Beach residents, and a couple of uses were not listed there. All of those property owners will be impacted by this request, and the values of their properties will be deteriorated. Also, I noted a couple of uses, I happen to drive Bellevue virtually every day that I go to my office. There is a little auto detail shop down there that sometimes is closed, sometimes is open, but it's a neighborhood business. It's one of the few things on that corner that has stayed open consistently with people providing service. Those kind of uses will be put out. The same thing as you go down Orange Avenue, there's businesses there, and I travel both of those streets a lot. I want to speak for just a minute briefly. I'm a born and raised Volusia County resident. I live in a 50-year-old house less than 35 feet from the street that I live on. I'm not going back to a gated subdivision. I'm a resident of this community. I've been educated in Volusia County. From the perspective of the Midtown Redevelopment Plan, first, it's important to note that the plan is not an adopted plan, but let's take for a minute as if it was. In Redevelopment Proposal, Section 4.11, there are implementation strategies. None of those implementation strategies in the plan that's been accepted by the Board state that prohibition is one of the things that the Board should be working toward. Instead, when you read through the policies and you look through the Land Development Code, what you'll see is that encouragement of reuse of properties is proposed, and that with that, there should be compliance with landscaping codes and other provisions to make the properties look better. Also, in your photo expose, you did not have a picture of Daytona Toyota, which is one of the uses that will become precluded. It is an example of how someone can run and take care of their property and do it very well. Also, not listed and not shown is Spanos Automotive, which is down near the old Harley-Davidson shop. It's the old bakery, and I'm trying to remember if it's a Dandy Bakery or which it was. I went to it on a field-
Southern.
Was it Southern? I went to it in a field trip in elementary school. And you look what Spanos has done with that property, and it was an abandoned property. My point is this, you do not attain redevelopment through preclusion or prohibition. You simply don't encourage people to come in and invest in the community and make things better. The uses that were there on those properties, and I've mentioned in my letter to you because I concern myself primarily with ISB, were once businesses that were productive and had an asset to US 92 and ISB. Though some of those businesses moved north on Nova Road, actually, now some of those uses are still going to be affected by-
This proposal.
The use of my client's property, which is actually more Nova Road than it is ISB, would be precluded from being reused. And I want to emphasize a point to you that some of the speakers assumed, but they were incorrect. The contracts for the reuse of these properties were not instigated by the movement to prohibit these uses. They were actually in place, and the contracts have now stopped. I was called because my- I was called because my client, Mr. Matthews, had buyers for both properties. Daytona Toyota wishes to buy Daytona Lincoln Mercury. O'Reilly Automotive, which is represented by the gentleman in the second row, is the second user. Those would be new uses in the Midtown redevelopment area. And when you look at how much new construction has or has not occurred in Midtown, I think it's important to keep in mind that there are people that want to come here but would be precluded by this use. One of the most important things that happens if you have new development because of the land development codes is that you have landscaping and other things that are stated in the Midtown Redevelopment Plan as things that should occur in order to improve the area. And I don't have the time and you don't have the time to listen to me read to you each and every policy in 4.11 of the Midtown Plan. There are fourteen. But all of those speak to encouragement and doing things that will make the area look better. There is no policy whatsoever about prohibition. I'm going to have Mr. Gardner come up to you in a minute and speak to you about users he has tried to find for this property. And he's got commentary to make to you on that. But also, very importantly, to the community at large, is the idea that property owners have rights in their property. And although the staff, the folks from Midtown have spoken about data and analysis, you haven't been given any of that to support your decision. You do not have an adopted Midtown Plan that says to preclude it. I pointed out to you in my rebuttal that the policy that cited to you is not a Midtown neighborhood policy. It is completely a misstatement of the policies that do apply to Midtown. So your staff report is inaccurate in that respect. There is no basis for you to take the action requested by the Midtown Board. Now, let me just take the other side for a minute. I think that Mr. Ivy and the rest of the board members are absolutely genuine in their desire to improve their neighborhood and their community. And I hope that they're successful. It's my community too. I'm very close to it. I have an auto shop next to my office on Nova Road. We haven't been blinded by their existence. They've actually improved it. But you have to be objective in how you proceed. And I do not think the means of proceeding are going to attain the goal that's sought. And that is the problem. Daytona Beach, I think, has had an idea in some cases that prohibiting people from doing things somehow encourages a better outcome. But if you look around us, I don't think that's been the case. I think, community-wide, not just in Midtown, we have spun down, not up, as time has gone along. And I don't think that you're taking a step, if you support this request, to make things become better. I think what you do instead is to freeze time. Because to have new construction, you have to have new users desiring to do that. And the only thing that I could infer from the comments that I heard is that somehow by prohibiting the uses, it becomes more likely someone could assemble the property to a larger piece to make a bigger development. But what does that entail if that's the case? I was interested, Mr. Fishback, when you talked about someone being pushed out of their home. It relates to an idea that you devalue property for the point of assembly. But the regulations in Florida and the Burt Harris Act that I've mentioned to you in my letter to the board, really take a look at that when regulatory powers are used to devalue property. And finally, I guess from a human component, if you put yourself in the position of a property owner and look at that list of people that are there, how would you feel if someone came to you and said, "Well, guess what? Your use has just become prohibited." And from a nonconforming perspective, if that use is destroyed in a fire or storm, it can't be rebuilt. Only the uses permitted in the BA use that are not prohibited could be allowed. And you saw earlier in one of your other staff reports that there are retail sales allowed there. I would ask you too to think about, what is the difference if I go and buy an air filter and Ms. Benjamin goes to the store next door and buys a hairbrush? They are both retail sales. There is no difference in the impact between the two. O'Reilly is a Fortune 500 company. I'm going to have someone else explain to you what their plans are for a store in Daytona Beach. But I say to you as genuinely as I, this is not the way to go. There are legal ramifications to the proposed impact that you will have on my client's property. And he wants to speak to you about the fact that he hasn't been just sitting for two years and not doing something and didn't come to the party, because in fact, he did. And if you would, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to yield to Mr. Matthews and let him speak about that, and then we'll pick up from there.
He was the next to call. There will be a time load on these. I would allow you more time.
Before he sits down, I'm sorry, could I, before, I'm sorry. Could I just ask Mr. Morris one question since you're up here? The comment about the Daytona Toyota in the, by Gib Danahauer as the prospective purchaser for the Lincoln Mercury site.
There's executed contracts.
Okay. Is, just out of curiosity, is he aware he'd be made nonconforming? Did you, I mean, did he?
I don't represent Mr. Danahauer, and I'm not sure if he's aware of the fact that he also would become nonconforming. But I don't know the answer to the question.
And by executed contracts, what does that exactly mean?
What that means is there is a deposit. Both parties have agreed to the sale price and the timeline for the transaction to be concluded. And in that timeline, they go through, typically a buyer would go through what's referred to as a due diligence period. That relates to what they're going to have to do in order to open the property. In a property such as Daytona Lincoln Mercury, that means that what Mr. Danahauer would have to do is to conform to the lighting standards, the landscaping standards, which I think are twenty-five feet on both Nova and ISB, according to the Midtown Plan. And there are other internal landscaping standards that the city imposes for their typical site plan review that are applied citywide. So that if you took Daytona Lincoln Mercury, what you would have is something that, from an aesthetic perspective, looks a lot more like the Toyota dealership. But I believe with bigger landscape buffers, I'm not quite sure how big the buffers are along Nova at the Toyota dealership. But when you look at this segment of road, there's essentially no automotive uses besides the mechanic shop next to me and a couple of places at Bellevue, when you go from Bellevue on north out of Midtown. But what you do have proximate to Midtown, you've got Daytona Toyota, which is in it. You've got Honda, which is across the street. You've got a John Hall dealership, I can't remember which one is across the street, but you've also got John Hall Chevrolet, immediate adjacent to Toyota, but outside the Midtown redevelopment area. And what you had is those uses, when uses, automotive uses began to come off of 92, some shifted to North Nova, others shifted to the auto mall. Ford went out to the auto mall. The Chevrolet dealership shifted north.
Okay, you're going a little further afield than I, but, and just one other thing. In exercising that due diligence, did this proposed prohibition come up?
No. No, it gained, I was called by the Realtor, Mr. Gardner, who's here.
Okay.
When the seller became aware of the proposed prohibition and the timeline was, I believe, approximately a week prior to your last meeting where you continued. I called, I knew it was going to be continued, and I made contact after that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Matthews.
I'm sorry, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. I'm Irving Matthews. I'm the owner of Daytona Beach Holdings, which owns the Daytona Lincoln Mercury property as well as the old Quincy's property. And when I closed the dealership back in October of '08, I met with the mayor, I met with some of the managers there at the city, and offered to try to implement a swap and ask their assistance in implementing a swap between U-Haul and my property so that Bethune-Cookman could utilize the U-Haul property. At that time, the city asked me to allow them to let out an RFP on the property to develop it. I spent, I don't know, a year or so with them working through this RFP that they had and trying to get developers to develop that site. And they came back to me because they had no developers to develop that site. At that point in time, I started looking for ways to dispose of the property. I listed it with a Realtor and tried to sell it. And the Realtors have tried to find other people. Initially, there were those that were looking for people that might develop it. And we've also been looking for anyone that was interested in buying it. I've maintained the site. I've paid the taxes. I've done all those things since October of 2008. I now have in hand two contracts. One on the Quincy's property, one on the Lincoln Mercury property. I might add that they mentioned Gib was interested in the property. Gib was interested in the property when I first left the property. But because of the state of the economy and so forth, they backed out. And at that time, I think he wanted Toyota to assist him in doing it, and Toyota refused to do it at that time also. He has since come back. He's got Toyota in bed with him, and he wants to buy that property. He's been wanting it since I shut it down. So early this year, I think it was, Gib called, and we have a contract. I also have a contract which was, which we entered into prior to his with O'Reilly's for the Quincy's property. I think what we're doing here is if we say that we can't develop that property, you're talking about letting that property sit there and just deteriorate. Until someday, we find a developer for it, which I carry it, and I think it's unfair to me. This property was originally designated for that use. It's zoned for that use. And I think it's appropriate, if we have contracts, that you allow me to sell this property to these people. They're going to develop it, they're going to improve it, not develop it, but they're going to go in and improve the property. They're going to improve the neighborhood. They're going to generate more taxes for the community. And we don't have property sitting there dormant, deteriorating. I've not only paid for the taxes and the maintenance on it, I have security guards there at night that I've been paying for since 2008. And I think it reaches a point where, you know, if the city want to let it just sit there and do nothing, you think about people talking about the neighborhood and the appearance when they come in. And I think this is an excellent opportunity for us to do something about that property and do it now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Gardner?
Claude Gardner, 120 South Palmetto in Daytona. As Mr. Matthews said, in October '08, he closed the dealership and put an RFP out, or the city put an RFP out. They had no takers on that RFP. From January 2010 until June of 2011, it was listed with a local broker. The broker had one prospect, and that was a discount mattress store. And they only wanted to have the front of the property, and that never materialized. In June of '11, the property was listed with me at Penontia Commercial Real Estate. I put together a plan with a new building with seventy thousand square feet of retail downstairs and three hundred apartments above, and it was going to be a student housing project. At that time, I would have been thrilled to have Midtown come to me and say, "Hey, let's try to help you out with that." I went and talked to Dr. Trudy Reed, and she supported it. Daytona State College didn't want to talk to me. None of the other colleges wanted to talk to me. And I pushed that thing as hard as I could push it because I had the vision of putting that there. I have the vision for Midtown. I think Midtown deserves a better fate than what they have. And tonight, on record, I want to say to Midtown that I would be more than happy to serve as a commercial real estate broker for them with no compensation. Because I want to go in and try to help them do what they're trying to accomplish. But by trying to put a prohibition on these uses, it just isn't going to happen that way. On October 15th of 2011, Mr. Harry Glitz, and I'd be happy to provide the phone number to anybody that would like it, saw the property on my website. He represents a fast food chain, Quaker Steak. And that's S-T-A-A-K, Quaker Steak. Quaker Steak owns forty-five restaurants across the nation, thirteen in Ohio, nine in Pennsylvania. They have one in St. Pete and are now expanding to more Florida locations. Mr. Glitz was extremely excited about the property from the website. When he arrived, he basically said he would not even consider putting one of his restaurants, a fast food restaurant, on that site, pointing out at that time the apartments that had been abandoned in the back. He then said, "And that nasty center that's across the street." So what I'm telling you as the broker that has tried to work this property for the last eight months, this is going to be about the biggest step up that you can take with it. You have a national company in O'Reilly's, and we'll be introducing them in just a moment, but a national company, a Fortune 500 company in O'Reilly's that wants to put not only an auto parts store, but a distribution center there. And you have the internationally branded Toyota, and they're going to come in and they're going to be to Toyota standards with the landscaping, with the building, with everything else. And on top of that, they're going to bring fifty jobs to that area. Mr. Danahauer asked me to convey that to you on the fifty jobs. It's just almost impossible to get anyone excited about that property. And again, to Midtown, I respect what you're trying to do. I tried to put seventy thousand square foot retail in there from a complex, three hundred, and it just was impossible to do. And I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to be in front.
You need to fill out a green sheet too.
I did. It should be in there.
Oh, you did?
David Cobb, CBV.
Okay. Hi, thank you. My name is David Cobb. I'm with Bishop Beal Commercial Realty out of Orlando, Florida. First off, I want to say that I was born and raised in Volusia County. I grew up in that area playing basketball, getting Krispy Kreme doughnuts from that and selling it to go to basketball camps. If any of you need proof of that, you can go on YouTube and see me on the receiving end of a dunk from Vince Carter. So I know the area, know the area very well. My client is O'Reilly Auto Parts. They're a Fortune 500 company. They're a very strong retailer. We're working multiple deals in the central Florida community right now. I'm here to speak specifically about the auto parts restriction. Essentially, I do all retail. I represent clients such as Dunkin' Donuts, Fresh Market, Jersey Mike's, and I know what retail corridors should look like. If you, if you look at a use like O'Reilly, and then you go and look at anchor restrictions of shopping centers, your Publix's, your Targets, your various retailers, auto parts retail stores are not restricted. The reason why is they're a low-impact use, and they're really no different than your Walgreens, your Verizon's, your Batteries Plus. People are going in there to buy auto parts in a retail setting. They don't do any auto-related services, no tire changes, no oil changes. And they are a great part of any community that they're in. For an example, we're working deals in Port Orange, Holly Hill, Ormond, South Daytona, New Smyrna Beach, Edgewater, Andeland. And they're on, they're on a fast-track expansion, and they're utilizing me to help them find those locations. Now, that's just Volusia County. In addition, we're working deals in Winter Park. We just signed a lease in Longwood. We just signed a lease in Altamont Springs, as well as multiple communities, about seven different deals in Brevard County. Essentially, what they plan on doing, and they are under contract and they have already spent money on due diligence with surveys and site plans and things like that, they want to knock down a ten-year-old building that is dilapidated, put up a brand-new retail building with upgraded parking lot, parking lot lighting, landscaping. And all this is to a Fortune 500 standardization of quality for all of their locations throughout the country. In my opinion, I don't see any reason why this would harm your community. It's, it's something, it's also something that auto parts retailers tend to cluster. But what it does is it creates convenience for the consumers and the wholesalers, which are essentially the mechanics. So if you, if you want to get your car repaired quickly, an AutoZone does not have the auto part that you're looking for. You can go to O'Reilly. That mechanic should have your car done more quickly. And then also, as Mr. Bohan indicated, probably the best time to have an auto part, on auto parts is very good to be within walking distance of your house because there's a good chance that you're walking there because there's a problem with your car. So I guess in closing, what I would like to say to the commission here is that O'Reilly's expanding. If we don't go here, we're going to go into a different community. I'm going to find that next site. And I think this is a great opportunity that both of us are going to miss out on. And just one more thing. This is going to be a hub store for O'Reilly. Their typical footprint is sixty-eight hundred square feet. This is going to be a nine thousand square foot hub store that is going to service all the spokes of their business model. And this could detrimentally affect their, you know, their future expansion plans in the area. And this store alone is going to create thirty-plus jobs. And in Volusia County, this store is going to basically fuel over a hundred jobs to our community in a time where, you know, I think jobs are something that we're all looking for. So I'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nicholson?
John Nicholson, 413 North Grabure Avenue. When we were looking at the visiting on the beachside and looking at the beachfront, what we were going to do, nobody envisioned the 2004 hurricanes that would wipe out literally dozens of hotels. Now they're gone, and we've got vacant land. Eventually, they will be redeveloped. Nobody knows what's going to happen in this area. What you're asking, remember the tornado that went through? All right? If anything happens, you're talking about, what, fifty, a hundred businesses? And all those jobs would just vanish. That's an awful lot to tell a community, "We're going to get rid of all these businesses and all these jobs." I don't think the business people knew that you were going to sit there and say, "We're going to make all of you, you fifty, or a hundred, or whatever, nonconforming." I mean, it's huge to a community. It really is. When somebody came up here and said, "Well, there's been no change in the last thirty or forty years." Well, I've been here thirty years. Well, I've been here 30 years, and I can think of 12 businesses right on international loan that have changed, that have upgraded. You can't say Hope Six isn't an ISOR. It is not an ISOR. When you look at Little Caesar, remember what that used to look like? That little dinky building? All right? Take a look at the firecracker place, Spanos. All right, Napa. Then there's that audio store that was there. There are a lot of places that are related to this that we call ISORS. I don't consider Toyota an ISOR. I think it's a fantastic business that provides an awful lot of jobs. But you would want to ban all of these things. Now, I'm not a fan of, of car washes, but that little car wash on the corner on Nova, right behind Amscott, it's an attractive little building, and it provides jobs. We have to look at what's going to happen in the long run. When you look at, at saying that, well, you wanna get rid of, uh, Spanos, you wanna get rid of Stan's Transmissions, you wanna get rid of the Napa store, you wanna get rid of Toyota, these are not ugly buildings, and these are not nuisances to the neighborhood. So, when you look at this, realize that there are people here that want to put businesses there. They wanna bring in jobs to the neighborhood, which is what the neighborhood wants. If you've ever gone to one of the main, uh, Midtown meetings, they say they want jobs. Well, here, you just talk about A, jobs coming in, and now Midtown's saying, well, we don't want those kind of jobs. Well, you're not gonna get, your choice, jobs are jobs, and they're not detrimental. And lastly, I would like to ask about, what's the definition, 'cause Charles kinda threw me, are we only talking about a narrow strip of Midtown is being, or is it all of Midtown? All of Midtown CRA? And if you do all of Midtown CRA, you're fouling up an awful lot of people and an awful lot of property that could be redeveloped. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, uh, one late one that came in for four, Mrs. Jane? Jermaine Ermer?
Jameson.
Okay.
Uh, Dr. Ermer Jameson, 435 South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. I'm gonna tell my age, I've been here 63 years. So, I am very familiar with this area in terms of the changes. One, ISB is not the only part of Midtown that we're concerned about. We're concerned about the whole area. So, this quest for prohibition of these various things is going to impact the rest of where we live. But what I really came up here to say is that as I was listening to these gentlemen, I was both pleased and surprised about all this new stuff that they are anticipating. But I'm also more puzzled, because if they were planning all of this stuff in Midtown, why is it that this is the first time we've heard about it? They are very much aware, I hope, that there is a Midtown Board, where things that are going to affect Midtown are talked about every second Tuesday in this building. So, if you are planning all of this stuff for Midtown, it is not for us, as I think somebody named Matthew says, for us to come to you, because we don't know who's doing what. You're supposed to come to us, at least, that's my view. So, if you're planning all this stuff for midterm, I just don't understand why the Board is just hearing about this tonight. Some of these things could've been worked out a long time ago if we have known what you are planning and what was coming about. So, I'm, I'm glad to hear things are going to be added on ISB. But I want to know why this is the first time the Midtown Board has heard about it. Now, I want that explained.
Let me ask a question real quick. When you were, when you said something that Matthew said, you-
I, I, I'm not sure, I'm not-
If you don't mind.
Somebody, somebody said-
All right, then I can sure, real quick, and I-
I didn't say that.
Not you, not you. Somebody-
You wanna make sure it wasn't him.
Said that, uh, that he would be glad if we come to him, but see, the, I don't think that's how it's supposed to work, because we don't know who's out there doing something in the boardroom. So, if things happen in midterm, I just want it known to everybody and anybody that we meet every second Tuesday in this building. So, for whoever's listening, if you're doing something, let us know. And maybe some of this stuff could, could've been worked out before, because we can't come to you. We don't know what you're planning. You can come to us.
Could I, I, I'm sorry, I have one question too. I just wanted to make sure, and I meant to ask this of Ms. McMillan when she was up, but Dr. Jameson, uh, in the March, at the March meeting of the Midtown Board, you actually voted against this being included.
Yes.
You, Doc, Mrs., Mrs. Benjamin?
Yes.
Dr. Jameson and Ms. McMillan.
And I had my reasons for it. But as I said, my basic reason for coming up here is-
Right.
Why are we just hearing, hearing about this? But I had reasons for my negative vote on that, but I still concur with the whole Board as we do in a democratic society, majority rules, and I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that, because they may know more about things than I do, so if the majority rules, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Right, I get majority, but I just wanted to be clear on, okay.
Thank you. One-
I wanna answer the doctor's question, but prior to that, Mr. Matthews wants to make sure the record is clear on what he said or did not say, because her recollection is not correct.
Yeah, I just, I just want the record to reflect that. I did not say Midtown needs to come to me. I, I don't think-
Not you, it's, uh, not that I said.
Okay, 'cause I did not say that, and I think, uh, you know, it, to the point of, of coming to Midtown, I have a contract, sold the property, and I think as these people begin to develop it, they develop it and do their due diligence, they will definitely come to the people that they need to come to to get approval. So, uh, you know, I'm, I, 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 you know, if, if, if she's wondering why I didn't come to her, I didn't come because I didn't have a plan.
To directly answer Dr. Jameson's question, the Midtown Board's process, when you have zoning that permits a use, is that when the owner or the developer of the property, in this case, it would be Toyota and O'Reilly, have their plans prepared, they bring those to the Midtown Board for a review by the Midtown Board. They don't come to the Midtown Board when they enter a contract and they're thinking about it. What you do in that instance is, and this is the work that I do all the time, you get a contract, you see what the property is zoned. You see if the use you planned for the property is permitted. In this case, in both uses are permitted. They were permitted by the zoning. Then, you take a look at what do you have to do to open the property, and the city partially uses its business tax format to make sure that codes will be met. So, you submit, though you'll go through a technical review committee meeting. They'll tell you, hey, you've gotta put in landscaping, you gotta do this with the building, you gotta have a 25-foot buffer, because those are the rules now. The business has been closed long enough, the new rules will apply. The plans are submitted, complying to those rules. Development review staff reviews those plans to determine if, in fact, the submission is consistent with the rules. When they make the determination that those, the plans submitted are consistent with the rules, it then begins the review process. And in Midtown, it begins with the Midtown Board. So, no one was either shunning or keeping a secret from the Midtown Board. They simply hadn't reached that step in the process. And there was the unfortunate passing in time where Midtown reached a conclusion of prohibition, which absolutely and completely stopped these contracts. The people haven't voided them, but they can't go forward, because right now, as a prospective, excuse me, purchaser, it looks as if those uses will be prohibited by zoning and therefore not able to be used for the things they contracted to buy them for. And as Mr. Gardner said, those are the users that he has available. So, Midtown isn't shunned or ignored. I certainly know it's a part of the process. We simply hadn't gotten to that point yet in the review. And there is no other entry point. And, and y'all may remember, another case that I had, you actually have to have, you could take a conceptual review to the Midtown Board, but it's an unusual step. That wasn't intended to be done here, because these people intend to move forward and the zoning allows it. So, customarily, when the light is green and you can do that use, you move forward and bring your plans for review. It would've gotten to Midtown but for the action taken in regard to prohibition.
Thank you. Yes, Jim.
It's just, you know, when we started talking about this in this discussion, that when the Midtown Board brought forth their concerns, I think the, the major concern, to start with, what, what I understood it, was the convenience stores, then the car washes, and then it kinda escalated from there. But it's, it's like a lot of things that we do here, it's sometimes we paint too wide of a brush, and it snares things in that weren't the intent to be snared in. You know, like, I, I don't believe that it would be the intent of the Midtown Board not to have a national, um, distribution center there at the Quincy State, or to have the Toyota upgraded.
It's gonna be a retail store as well as a district store.
But to have Toyota store upgraded, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think that that is an element for the neighborhood, and I don't really think that, I would perceive that that wasn't the intent. I can see the intent of the businesses that have been going on and the list that are here that, um, that have been out of business for 90 days, and they're sitting there and it's, and it's an ISOR. Uh, I can, I can see that portion, but I can't see the, this big picture over here with, like, stores like the Toyota and all that.
Uh, yeah, and, and I was online looking at, at the plans, and I understand where you're coming from. But those plans are for 10 to 50 years in, in accomplishing, and hopefully, a, a lot happens in between that time. But just looking where, what was listed for ISB and Nova, the vacant car dealership and restaurant, potential uses as a hotel, a restaurant, a grocery, or a pharmacy. I, I just wonder from hearing from a real estate agent and what they've been through and it's been down since 2008, how long do you think it would be before we would attract something like that? And that, would that really be a better use than what a contract is already there? Those things bother me, but very definitely, uh, as Mr. Hurd said, there are problems within the areas and with the, with the convenience stores, with the car washes, I, I can see a lot of that.
I'd like to say, number one, the plan is not to get rid of any businesses. Thank you. I've attended the meetings over the past three years. I've listened, I've asked questions with Midtown. I've attended the Midtown workshops as well as the Midtown Board meetings. And it's been made clear to me, and if I'm wrong, I'm to be corrected. They are not planning to get rid of any businesses. They are requesting that no new businesses of this sort be permitted, for clarity. Correct. That no new businesses of the sort which are listed be permitted. I understand what your plan is. I really hate that you didn't get us to have additional housing for college students, but at the same time, no, also, let me add this. I don't understand, I, I have a slight problem. I don't understand where the breakdown was. It wasn't mentioned before today. The swap with U-Haul, there's been a discussion with U-Haul for years. Bethune-Cookman has attempted to purchase it, and the price has escalated and escalated and escalated. And if the city was going to maneuver or work, uh, a swap there, why wasn't something done? Where was the breakdown there? You sent out an RFP with one result. I have an issue with that. Car dealerships personally, being a lifelong citizen of Volusia County, Daytona Beach, Midtown, I suggest, and I'm only one vote on this board, but I suggest auto dealerships go out to the auto mall. I just don't like the vision. Fortunately, Bethune-Cookman has purchased several dealerships and converted them and made excellent use of them, but I cannot see another auto dealership that does not last, and then that property go stagnant again for a long period of time. Quincy's, I could go on and on, because I sit and I think about it, nothing personal, but, Mr. Matthews, you were chairman of the board. You know Bethune-Cookman needed some property. I don't know why that wasn't manipulated. So, I have issues there personally, but at the same time, I understand the plan, the strife, uh, that this board has been through. They have fought and fought, they fought one another because they had a vision. Uh, there's a vision for the city of Daytona Beach. I just don't see, even though it's a national chain, I just don't see it on that corner. I'm just not ready for it. I, I really am not. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What's the auto zone that's already located there, and there's Napa around the corner on ISB? I don't see the need of a third one coming at there, at all.
Board, any other comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were still, okay. Are we going over here? 'Cause I'm gonna be talking for a little bit.
That's okay.
Okay.
Before you-
Sure.
Before you-
Sure.
I'd like to say, because I live in this area, I vehemently oppose this. Living there, I understand what this board is trying to do, and the individuals watching on television, the individuals present, no. This, I've said it over and over. Midtown has been looked upon as the black hole for the city of Daytona Beach, and they've worked hard for the past three years to try to change that vision, to try to change that. And I think all the time, we've done so much, so much to bring up, uh, to rectify problems beachside, uh, coming across even beach street. But when you get to, I'll say MLK, and you go westward to Nova Road, it's almost like everyone puts on horse blinders. And I think it's time that we listen to the citizens of that area.
Shree Mark?
And I just want, um, Ms. Washington, when you say you vehemently oppose, actually, I, I, just to make sure I under, you mean you actually support what's being proposed? You vehemently oppose this? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was really clear on that. What sort of, uh, the, the place I start with is that somehow this plan is being treated as if, as if it's an approved blueprint, and it's not. All it's been is accepted, just like the E-Zone plan was originally accepted. And from that point of acceptance, on the presentation that the E-Zone did to the commission, just like FAMU did to, actually, the CRA, that, which is the Commission Acting as the Community Redevelopment Agency, that E-Zone still then went through, I believe it was almost 18 months, two year, well, longer than two years, before we got to the point of even making recommendations of what in that plan would work and what in that plan would not work, and then making recommendations that started with the redevelopment board up to the planning, up to the commission, on what might have to change in the comp plan, what might have to change in zoning. It was a starting point, and what I'm hearing is somehow there's the idea that it's a finishing point, and it's not. Um, I heard one of the speakers say that, um, the, in Midtown, they're trying to do things in harmony with the Midtown Master Plan, which is in harmony with the city's land development code. Actually, it's not in harmony. For instance, that plan recommends eight different development or zoning districts. Right now, Clarion has five for Midtown. So, someone's gotta figure out what the other three are, which ones work better for Midtown, and which, which ones might be folded into others. One of the things that that plan suggests, the Midtown plan, is an area where we have a density of 80 units per acre. That is double the highest density anywhere in the city, with no consideration or discussion or information on what that might do to services, infrastructure, roads, or anything else. Um, another part of that plan suggests that there is 90% lot coverage, making it impervious surface, and two of the zoning districts that are proposed in the Midtown plan only require for landscaping because of the 90% lot- plan only require for landscaping because of the ninety percent lot coverage, one tree every twenty-five feet. I don't think that's in harmony with anything in the city's land development code when you look at our landscaping. And you can go through the whole plan and find different things like that, which it's my understanding that what the CRA did in accepting it and sending it back to start at the board was to work through those things. What in this plan will work for us, what will it not? I have a real problem. Zoning is a police power. It is recognized by law as a police power. It is not something that you just lightly suggest taking away someone's development rights on current zoning and that's something that, this is existing zoning. There's nothing in that plan, there's nothing even in the comp plan when you actually put that policy in the right neighborhood rather than the neighborhood that's listed, there's nothing in the comp plan that says to change that zoning. There's nothing in the plan that said, the Midtown plan that says in anywhere, and that's even brought out in the staff report, to have prohibited uses as a way of trying to achieve the goals of the plan. Nothing in there suggests that. And in fact, there is even a quote, and it's on page forty-five in the plan, that says, um, it cautions and it's, it cautions that regarding commercial real estate development in underserved communities, it is important for public officials and community leaders to understand the cycle of economic development in order to have realistic expectations and to work productively with developers to meet the objectives of the community. The plan goes on to caution that even if all identified challenges were addressed, in most cases, there is still a necessary progression to the development of underserved markets. And that's actually what we heard Mr. Gardner say in terms of your first step up. That whole plan talks about steps, progression. When you look at both the, the immediate twelve actions, you look at the implementation short-term, you look at the midterm, you look at the long-term, which I, I did, I've been reading this, going through this, there's nothing that says, "short circuit the process by prohibiting those uses that don't go with what we think we'd like to see," especially when the plan has not been vetted to see how it will actually work. Um, the, the E-zone plan, I think, shows something that when everybody takes their time, when, and, and yes, I realize they feel like it's been a long time. We heard the same thing on the Main Street Board about the E-zone. Just getting to the process, when are they gonna have a plan? When are they gonna have a plan? Finally, they have a plan. What? We now have to go through all of this to see what works in the plan? When are we gonna get to that? There's that sense of impatience because yes, you feel for your community and you want to see a change and you know where it's hurting, but the best way to do that is to do it in a way that actually is going to recognize the realities. We don't have a magic wand. And I keep hearing that we all want a magic wand. We don't have it. And I think that what is, is being proposed will actually further harm the Midtown area because I really believe in my heart that that will sit vacant even longer. Um, I have even more of a, I have a huge problem with using police powers to tell forty-two, not forty as we have, but forty-two, because two were left off here, forty-two businesses that they are now legally non-conforming in a zoning that they've been in viable, not all of them are stable, not all of them are solid, but actually the bulk of these businesses, when you drop, these are solid, long-term corporate citizens in this city. They provide work, they have wonderful, um, um, areas, they keep up their properties. And again, I'm not talking all, but the bulk, when you go visit a lot of these, yes, there are some problem properties, but to say, to, and to say that Daytona Lincoln, or Daytona Toyota, you're, you're saying not only can they not sell, they can't do servicing? They, they're, you're, you're getting rid, and yes, I know you're saying you're not getting rid, but by the very fact that you're making it legally non-conforming, they can never, ever, if they're closed for thirty day, or three months, they can never reestablish that use. And then you have a whole other area. So you will actually, long-term, what you're seeking to do is change the kind of businesses there. And I, I just don't think that this is the way to do it. Um, I think this is premature. I would like to see a more reasoned approach, again, as was done with the E-zone plan. Everybody didn't get what they wanted, um, but ultimately, I think we got something that once it was finally approved by everybody, and I mean approved, not accepted, approved. Once it was finally approved, it's something that is going to work, but there's more of this process that has to happen and this is not, to me, the way to go about seeing that Midtown has a future. I think this will make sure that Midtown is gonna be stuck even longer.
Yes, Mr. Fishback.
Well, I just had, I just wanted to clarify, when we, uh, I guess prohibited convenience stores, we, we made those all non-conforming, right? Okay, we made them all, I just wanted to make sure we did that. Um, so it will be the same thing tonight?
Not, not, not quite.
Not true? Okay, so what, so what happened when we, with the convenience stores?
I'm not speaking about the convenience stores which are operating businesses. They can continue to operate, but they cannot change and they cannot be replaced if they're destroyed. But a property that is presently unopened, as Daytona Lincoln Mercury is, and I did file a business tax receipt, application, it's been held, the prohibition goes in place, nothing can happen on it that would allow the automotive uses that it's developed for. So that's why there's a difference, going concern versus one that's going to be restarted. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
And I, I will say again, I'm looking at the size of this list and I'm not seeing with the size of this list what we saw with, I think it was maybe, what, ten? Ten or eleven, twelve? Yeah, it was much, much shorter. And I'm not seeing any backup that makes Daytona, Spanos, Napa Auto, Stans Transmissions, I'll keep going, makes them a nuisance, makes them a blight, makes them anything other than what they are, which is solid, viable, operating businesses.
Any other board comments? Mr. Abbey, I know you wanted to make, I'm sorry.
I have, yes, I have a question and I, I, I wanna make sure you understand what they are, what the Midtown Board is requesting. They're not requesting that anything be done to these existing businesses.
Except it will be done.
Except.
If they go out of business. If they don't, if they're not productive or they, they cease to be in business for ninety days.
Just say if Spanos shut down for ninety days, say the health was bad, just for example, the health was bad and it takes them a hundred and twenty days to sell the property. After ninety days, they're non-conforming, they can't go back in as that used. So that's what I was saying about, you know, closing businesses. And that could happen with any, any.
Any business.
Business that's ongoing, that's a good business, that's a welcome business, if there was a death of a family, if they were sick, if, heaven forbid, there was a fire.
If they were trying to do a swap with U-Haul?
They could go back if there was a fire because they would be non-conforming.
It's done.
And then if there was a death and the children are trying to sell the family business, if it goes past ninety days, that business is gone and not reopened, that's what it was because it's non-conforming. That's what I was talking about earlier.
Yeah, I think John Hall Honda that just changed hands recently where the owner wanted to retire, if that had been the case, he could have sold his business as a going business.
Right. If it's closed for.
Well, actually, he could have because he's on the opposite side of the Midtown. But if it had taken, it, it would have been, yeah, but it is a point.
I just think there's so many uncertainties with this. I don't know how we could, we could pass this and, and be okay because I think there's so many loose ends with this. I think there's, there's nothing that's concrete, there's, and every time, I think every time we turn around, there's something else is brought up that, that makes this sound, I think, you know, I, there's no way I could vote in favor of this and I think if, and I understand where you guys are coming from and, and, and your efforts, but I think you have to go back and, and put something else, put something better together than this because this is just, there's so many holes in this and I can't, there's just no way that I could support this.
Ms. Back, oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's, no, it's. Board, I really appreciate the great debate that you all are having. That tells me we're doing our job because it's creating a debate. I think maybe two weeks ago, the greatest plan that was given was at the Tarragona Estates. You guys said no. Better development, better looking development, had all the bells and whistles. You said no. Here it is, when downtown brings before this planning board a prohibition or anything that they would like, that they don't want or need in their community in order to change it, you vote for it. There's never this type of discussion when downtown, Main Street, or any other CRA comes into this planning board and say, "Look, we need this prohibited because we're gonna make a change." You don't have these type of questions. The reason Midtown is the way it is now is because it is the dumping grounds of this community. When I stand back and sit back and look at how y'all have all these problems, you're not trying to help us change it. Because you can sit back, the E-zone, like you say, you've been working on the E-zone plan for over two to five years and it, it's not complete yet, but here it is, Midtown can come in here with less dollars and get a plan to the point where it's ready to be accepted and move forward, but you can find holes. But you, Ms. Remark, did not come to one meeting and say, "Hey, what about this? Have you guys thought about this or that?" But you'll sit up here and you'll try to tear down Mid, Midtown because we're trying to make a change. But what's starting to happen is this, we need our, uh, we need this prohibited use list. Okay, when you talk about eighty jobs and, you know, I got to go along with Ms., Ms. Washington there. Ms. Matthews, you was the chairman of the board at Bethune-Cookman University. Not one time, and Mr., what'd you say your name? Gardner. Not one time has the Midtown Board seen any plan, any plan to help us in this community. Now, I have to give it to Attorney Morris there because he brought a plan and he, he brought it well in advance on the shops across the street on Nova Road, okay? Well in advance, but it, when you're developing, it may take time to, uh, bring a, a development to fruition. We all know that when you're in this type of business. That's the due diligence part of a contract. It'll say, "Oh, no, this is going on, you can't do it." That's a part of change. It bothers me when everybody can come and make all kind of accusations, "Oh, we heard Midtown, we heard, oh, this won't help Midtown." It ain't gonna never change with the attitudes that goes on on these different boards in Daytona Beach. And because we're starting to sit up and say, "Wait a minute, we need to make a change. We don't need too many of this and too many of that. We would never be a, a Port Orange or Almond or another, a major metropolitan or urban city if we don't make these changes on what we're trying to do." It's different if Mr. Matthews just came to the city or came to the board, the city tried to help with the RFP, not one incentive. Not one incentive from the owner was in the RFP. Not one. But then here we are trying to make a change and a difference and, "Oh, we're not ready to make a change or it's too many holes." I guarantee you, how many holes was in that Tarragona, uh, package that you guys said no on? That passed by the city commissioner and they said no. A lot better plan than what they have right now. So it doesn't matter about the funds that's been spent or what, uh, he may lose, he's not gonna lose anything. But what it will do as this plan moves forward is help us to market Midtown like the rest of Daytona Beach is being marketed. Because I guarantee you, Midtown is not marketed the way downtown is marketed, the way the beachside is marketed and the way Baloo Road and A-1A is marketed. We not even in the commercials except the statue of Mayor McLeod Bethune. That's the only town we're marketed and here we are trying to make a change for our community. That's why I'm so glad to hear this debate. But I guarantee you, when you go back home, you won't stop in Midtown. Okay? Uh, 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 another car dealership is not gonna help Midtown and just to let you know, we did pass a, 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 it was controversial, but new housing is going up in Midtown in that old block, the old Daytona Village, it's already been torn down. The new, um, the new housing will start June the first. So change is coming. Okay? When you start about, when we're looking at, no, when we're looking at, now, listen to you. When we sit back and look at what happened on the change that we're trying to do, and I'm gonna state my point right now.
No, Mr. Ivy.
The, uh, change that we have in our master plan is this, okay? We're trying to change into a urban look. So therefore, we might not have a tree every ten feet, but what we have, we're gonna be able to bring in the density in order to make our communities more viable. See, cause you, you're not, you, when you go home to the beach sides, wherever you guys live, you know, it's gonna be.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. I've had about enough.
But what I'm gonna say, what I'm trying to do is say this here, okay? We want to change, we would like to change Midtown.
Mr. Ivy.
That is what this is about, changing Midtown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is, I'm.
I don't think we need to hear any more. I think the board is ready. I'm waiting for motion.
Make a question, we approve land development code that the community has refused in the Midtown redevelopment area development two thousand and twelve dash zero one eight.
Second.
I would like a roll call vote on this, so, and for, for verification.
Explain the yes and the no.
I'm sorry?
Explain the yes or the no.
Yes, would you?
A yes vote will prohibit these uses and no vote will not.
A yes, a yes vote will prohibit the uses.
Yes.
And a no vote will not.
Mr. Hurt?
No.
Ms. Remark?
No. Wait, could I ask one other question? Wait, I'm sorry.
There's been a motion.
I know there's been a motion, but just so, what is needed for this to go forward? Six? Is this a text? I don't wanna know what, I wanna, I don't wanna happen what has happened once before.
Can you stay there? Six. Yeah, I believe it's six.
Six yes votes are needed for this to go forward.
To move it forward.
Okay, no.
Okay. Uh, Mr. McGinnis?
A yes vote moves it forward, a no vote doesn't move it.
Well, it's still gonna go forward, it's just whether or not it has a recommendation of approval or not.
A no is no recommendation of approval. A yes is recommended.
A no is, no, no.
Mr. Bohan?
No.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Ms. Washington, yes. Ms. Benjamin?
Yes.
Mr. Fishback?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mrs. Sage is not here. Okay, the motion does not pass, it's five, uh, four, four, five against.
All right, moving on to other business. Moving on to other business. Downtown Blue Road redevelopment, Ms. Washington.
Yes. I was just waiting for them to leave. Downtown Blue Road Redevelopment Committee met May first here in this room, Commission Chambers. And there were several items on the agenda. One of the main items discussed was the LCD text amendment dealing with the downtown hotels, which was passed. And that was a lengthy discussion, a very lengthy discussion. There were also, I have some other notes. The report came from the Police Department, and we had eighteen different places that were cited. The report, the police report along with the code enforcement is, at this point, coming down as far as complaints are concerned. I think this month it was sixteen, and last month there were about twenty. So the, they seem to be less, but they're still some of the same items. Buildings with the paint, lawns that need to be cut, things of that nature.
Midtown redevelopment, Ms. Benjamin?
No report, I didn't look into no eating.
Okay, Main Street?
Actually, I forgot my notes, and I'm right now so tired, I can't remember anything that happened, except we talked.
I guess, I guess we'll accept that. Any public comments?
Mr. Public?
Staff comments?
Thank you, Dennis Marozak, planning with the city. I have something quickly, I'd hope you indulge, just a couple of moments. Last meeting, we had a discussion on tree removal and associated penalties that, that we had brought forward. We discussed a few different things. Among them had to do with when a clearing permit was going to be required, and when a clearing permit is not required for the removal of trees. We also talked about restoration requirements, and the requirements for replacing trees, and what size trees would need to be replaced for illegally removed trees, and then also the cost involved between, the difference between illegally removed trees and just the standard cost of a replacement of a tree that wasn't illegally removed. At the end of the discussion, we were asking the board for some, some direction on maybe which way to go. And there was also a discussion on private property versus public property. We got some good information. Most of it, most of it was directed toward maybe perhaps education with, with the public on, on some of the private and, and public removal of the trees. I do have a suggestion to kind of take this a little bit further. What we'd like to recommend is perhaps that we, we bring these, this information, we provide it to the Beautification and Tree Advisory Board with some of these details. We'll have them take a look at it, kind of go through some of those requirements and what's currently on the books, and maybe they can come up with some ideas of, of what they'd like to see. And then what we can do is we can take that information and bring it back to the board and present it to the board, and then be able to perhaps move forward with something.
I think that's the next one, I think.
Sounds good?
We'll be able to handle it from there.
We will do that, then, thank you.
Thank you.
Understaff reports.
Right.
Clarion Associates, they have been working on our Land Development Code Module Three, and today I talked to Clarion. Mid-June is when we expect to receive a revised copy back from thirty pages of staff comments. And at that time, we'll review them, and depending on if, how closely they matched with our comments, we may have those available mid-June. More recently, or coming sooner, is the E-zone work that they're doing for us. That will more likely be in a couple of weeks, at the end of May, where we can have that for you. Staff wants to thank Mr. Fishback for your dedication, your time and talent serving this board. We really appreciate your time. And one thing staff's proud of is Rose Askew received her diploma, May fourteenth, Bachelor of Science, I believe. So that's a Bachelor of Science in Supervision and Management, I believe. And of course, she graduated with honors, so thank you.
No wonder she was asking all of the questions.
Actually, I saw her Saturday at public supervising her grandsons. She had him in complete control.
And I believe we have something also.
I was going to speak to that, yes. Tonight is Mr. Fishback's last evening with us, and we certainly do appreciate your counsel, that you have governance on this board, we're going to miss you. Daytona Beach is going to miss you, Zone Five is going to miss you. And, but your, your new, your new city is going to welcome you, and I hope you really get involved there the way you have here. After the meeting tonight, if you can all stick around, we have a little something in the room back there, make a little cake or something to, all right? A little sweet tooth, so, thank you. Any other board member comments?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody. I've learned a lot from all of you, and I've definitely enjoyed sitting on the board with you all. Even if I didn't agree with you, I still appreciate you. And, you know, it's been a good experience for me, and it's, it's, it's funny. My story is, to me, a funny story. I just came to a commission meeting. I was twenty-six years old, I came to a commission meeting, I just wanted to meet people. And I ended up here. So it's, you never know what, what life will bring you. And I'm looking forward to what is to come.
Good, thank you. Meeting adjourned.